Everyone. Everybody ready? I'd like to call to order the Village of Pinehurst Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for March 3rd, 2022. I'm Jeremy Hooper, and I'll be chairing this afternoon's meeting. I'll point out that currently we have five board members present, which does constitute a quorum, and we can do some business. We are expecting two others to be just a few minutes late today, for a total of seven. So let's go ahead and introduce ourselves, beginning with Matt on my left.
Matt Jones.
Luis Mafiro.
David Alzamora.
Jack Farrell.
And we are waiting on Julia Latham, who will be running a few minutes behind, as well as Philip Shoemaker. And absent for today's meeting is Paul Roberts and Sonia Rothstein, who will not be making it with us. I'll also introduce Alex Cameron and Darren Burridge, staff from the village who's with us tonight. I will remind us all that we are being video recorded, so please, please, please speak directly and clearly into your microphones. And with that, let's review the next agenda item, is to review the minutes from our 12-221 meeting. Does anybody have any additions, corrections, or changes to that? Anyone? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our 12-221 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
A motion by David Almazora, and a second by Jack Farrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes from the 12-221 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting are approved as written. So then we'll move on to the next agenda item, New Business, which is an overview of the draft small area plans. This is going to be a discussion-only item for us as a board for some questions and feedback from the, from staff. And no action will be taken in today's meeting on this agenda at all. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thanks, Jeremy. First of all, you have, you have some handouts, because I always travel with handouts. So on, in front of you, we'll have, you're going to have an existing zoning map for Village Place, you're going to have an existing zoning map for Pinehurst South. You also have the two focus area extractions from the, from the 2019 comp plan. And the other thing we made a copy of was, is the, is the, the existing zoning requirements in those areas. The lion's share of the, the lion's share of the zoning that's in those two districts are NC, Neighborhood Commercial, and OP, and some VMU. So this is just a handy, again, handy-dandy little, little reference tool when you start talking, when we start talking about, well, what can develop there, what can develop in these two areas right now. So it's just something to go back to. Now, why are we here? We're here, first of all, and we'll, we'll get into this, we're here because of this, the 2019 comp plan. So the recommended, there was a recommendation in 29, 2019 comp plan to develop two small area plans. So as we do in the village, it ends up on one of my strategy books, Jack's, all of these things. So it ended up as per my, the Planning Inspection Strategy Map, is one of the actions that we do, and we do very, we're very efficient with this. A small area plan for Village Place, Rattlesnake Trail, and NC, NC Highway 5, Pinehurst South. So that's why we're here. We ended up getting a recommendation in, in the comp plan, following through to the Strategic Operating Plan, following through to funding to get us to where we are today. So what we're going to start a little bit with is the background. And Alex has asked me not to be very wordy today, so I'm going to try and get you out of here under two hours, I feel like this is classroom. So, let's see here. So first of all, let's just take a look at, oh no, sorry. Looking for Village Place. Okay, so here's Village Place. So here is the existing Village Place area, this is the existing zoning, which is in the air, which is in, sorry. This is not as, doesn't work as well as mine. So this is, so this broader area is the Village Place area. So you can see on this particular map, this is a zoning map of the area, and you can see the buildings that are already developed on it. So you can see that Village Place itself, other than is, the core, you know, is, is pretty well-developed at this point, or there's, there's some development in the, in that particular area. Going down Rattlesnake, you see some, there's businesses on the east side of Rattlesnake. Transitioning over as you go north along Rattlesnake Trail to, there's a subdivision set up over there. And then you're headed out towards Cannon Park and Community Center, and all the way out here to Highway 211. So you can see what the existing zoning is, in place is, the majority of, the majority of the area, and really the core area is VMU, which is Village Mixed Use. That is the existing zoning. Down here south, can you see, can you, you can't see this, can you? You can't see my, you can't see my cursor on there? Can you see it?
Yeah, I can see it.
Hand in front of us, yes.
Okay. Okay. So this is, so this is the Village Place area. Now, if we go to the, the 20,000, the 2019 comp plan, we had five areas that, that we had in the comp plan, there are special areas that were, that were, that we're looking into to doing more planning in, in these areas, because these areas are either prone to, prone to some development, there's development available in them, or we're under some type of, some, some pressure in that area. So focus, this is the wrong one. So focus area four, which you have this handout, focus area four is the Village Place Rattlesnake Trail Corridor. And really what I want to show you here is this is what we were working off of when we're developing the small area plans for this area. So you can see this, this particular image shows the development status at the time when this was created. The blues, the blue shows development, that's redevelopment potential. The burgundy colored is develop, are, are developed parcels. And the, and the, and the white color is, is really undeveloped, and I don't know why Cannon Park is showing as undeveloped over there, but, so be it. This is really what we started to design off of, and this is kind of that development program. This was an estimate of what could go in this, in this particular focus area based on, based on the land use that was out there. So if you look at the use allocation, they're thinking about 26 acres of open, open space, and there is a large amount of open space around the Village Place area. Single-family detached, they weren't showing a lot of units, five units. Single-family attached, 11. Stacked multiple family, what they're estimating was about 214 stacked multiple-family units. And then this is really where the, where the broader land use categories are. General office, they were estimating potentially 158,000 square feet of general office. General retail, they were, they were showing about 316,000 square feet. That's a lot of square footage of, of those particular uses in, in those areas. So you look down to the bottom, and based on, based on those square footages, you see about, under the 2019 comp plan, they're showing about 1,500 new employees coming in over time on that. So that's just, that's, that's the basic use allocation. And following up here, this is the scenario plan. So you can see the scenario plan, the orange is Village Core, that's a VMU area, that's that, that's the core area of, of the small area plan for Village Place as well. It is the core area, that is the catalyst area. Then you have move out towards the north, you have mixed-use center, stacked residential, mixed-use center, standalone residential. So you can see the way it lays out in the, in the 2019 comp plan. Any questions on anything here? Just jump in? Well, it depends on, it depends on where you are within the district. So VMU, you can get 50 feet high, so you can get approximately, so you get approximately five, four to five stories in there, depending on how it's designed. And Neighborhood Commercial and OP, 35 feet. So you're getting two to three stories, depending on how the roofline fits.
Oh, hello. Can you kind of indicate with your pointer on the map where the differentiations are for those different zoning characteristics?
Right here, so right here in, in the orange Village Core area, that's the broader area that's zone VMU, right in here. So that is where the, the current height of the building's allowances is 50 feet in height. As you move to the north along Rattlesnake, between the mixed-use center, which is that, is that purplish color, and the, and the darker burgundy color, that, that the maximum height is going to be 35 feet. Both of tho, both of those areas would currently, all these areas currently allow some form of mixed-use, mixed-use stacked, stacked multiple-family development. Jack?
Isn't it true that a few of these parcels in both focus areas have pre-approved plans of some nature, going back, you know, almost 10 years, to tell you the truth? Either in, for residences and/or other uses?
The only one I'm aware of, Jack, is, would be the Green Site, where they, where it's Phase 1 and Phase 2, because I, I've been here as long as you, of course, so I-
Sorry, which one?
The Green Site, Phase 1 and Phase 2. So we're talk-
Yeah, the corner there has a pre-approved-
Correct.
-office building, if you will.
Correct.
And Mr. Sayer's property, right across the street here-
Oh, yes, yeah.
-has a pre-approved, so many condominiums and so forth, or townhouses, I'm sorry.
Like 16, I think? Yeah, you're right, the Tradition Site.
Buys a couple of times.
Yeah.
And isn't there an overlay district in the Pinehurst South, in the center area?
Uh, there's an over, the Pinehurst South overlay is kind of, it's just off of NC 5 to the-
It's that core area, you know, where the-
The core area.
-pole and the cabin is.
Good point, correct.
And to what extent does that change the zoning?
So, excuse me?
To what extent does that overlay change the zoning?
Very, very little. It has no more limitations on uses, it's really, really the only change is parking, if you will. And it says parking to be in the rear, really, that's really it.
And then, of course, we have the approval of the cottages, which is in that Pinehurst South, I think it's, is it-
You're jumping though, Jack. We're, we're going to get, we're going to get to Pinehurst South next.
Wanted to point out that many of these, a few of these parcels do have pre-approved plans, and it will dramatically, not dramatically, but it will affect the outcome of-
Correct.
And how many of those, how many of those rights have, of vesting have lapsed?
So you got, yeah, the Tradition Sites, Steve Say, I think, who owns it, or partially owns it. I think there's, what, 16 to 20 townhouse units on there, wasn't there, Alex, something like that? And you're right, the, the other building would be that, the, on Green's Phase 2, which would be that mixed-use or office building on, on the corner of Rattlesnake and MacAsco.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm curious about, on the redevelopment status map. The redevelopment potential lots? I mean, you know, almost every one of those has something on it now.
Correct.
Correct, is, am I right?
Correct, yeah. So you're looking at this map where you're seeing those blue colors, the redevelopment potential, and they are, because a lot of those uses are, are older, they've been around a while, they're going to start to tire out, those buildings are going to start to tire out, so they're going to go, and they're going to go through some form of redevelopment at some point in the future. That's why it's important that we get a code in place for the development that we want in this area as those things, as those things redevelop and, and into something else. Any other question on that, Luis?
I'm just curious if you had any feedback at all from those property owners?
Oh, feedback, no. Interesting, interesting point. We've talked to some of the property owners in, in that area, I've talked to, well, we've talked to, to the resort, because they have an interest in the area, we've talked to Steve Say, we've talked to the people involved with the Green Site. So we've talked to those three, we've talked about those owners directly, I've talked to Frank Mazur, he owns the old fire station, so I've talked to him, I talked to somebody along Power Plant Road last week. So I have talked to some of these property owners, but we've never actually reached out to have a meeting with all, all the property owners that are, that are impacted by these plans yet. And I think that's got to be in the mix, and I think we're working on that right now. Any other questions on this? Then we're going to go right into the report. Oh, not that one. So, what do we want to do tonight about, is, we really need to get you acquainted with the plans themselves. We, you know, I've seen, Jack, your, your pictures in, in this plan somewhere, I think Julie's in there too, with things, Jeremy. We need you to get comfortable with the plans, because I, I know you've been at, at the public workshops, and you've participated and provided input. But really, at, at this point, before we keep moving forward, we're going to be talking about these plans for a while, and we're going to be following up, doing more zoning changes related to implementing these plans. So we need you to get comfortable with the plans, we need you to know what's in these plans. So if we need to fine-tune the plans, which I'm hearing that we, you know, there's going to be some need to fine-tune the plans, I need you, we need you to understand what's in them first. So what we're going to do is, we're going to go over the plan tonight. You've got questions, just, it's not, it's not to provide any action, or, or we're not doing any recommending, recommendations tonight. I just want you to get familiar with the plan. I would like to follow up in two weeks to have a more working-related session on this, because I don't want to wait month to month. I would like, we'd like to have a meeting again in two weeks to keep this in front of us, plus I've got a moratorium running out, so I want to, I want to, I want to get this done. All right. So the small area plan, Village Place. So we go through it, I'm going to go through some of these parts really quick, some of them slow. So, you know, there's five basic chapters in here, in here, we have the introduction, and there's some good things that you need to read in that, you need to read the entire document. But there's some good things in the introduction to kind of set why we went down the path that we went for, for these plans. So you look in the introduction, the existing conditions, that can, that, that's the existing conditions that are on, on the ground, so we have various maps in there, where the roads are, where the dead ends are, things like that. But the market analysis, we spent some time on that market analysis. The market analysis helped with determining what some of the land uses could or should be in these areas. Public outreach, there's the feedback for the Phase 1, Phase 2, when we had the workshops. Recommendations, that, Chapter 4 is really where the meat of this is. This is, that's where you start to see the illustrations, how the land uses is setting up. Now, we have images on those plans. That's, they're nothing but images. They show a potential development pattern. It's not the development pattern that's going to likely occur, it's, it just shows how the development can lay out with respect to where we're recommending roads, creating that active street frontages, things like that. So it's just, it's just illustrative. All right, so when we get into the, when we get into Phase 1, Planning Goals, really you need to look at these project and planning goals. And the, the planning goals are really where, you know, what helped lead, lead the direction of the plan. And that really was to promote a mixed-use walkable neighborhood that is reflective of the Village Core, but does not compete or, compete with their dream. Recommend a mixed-use south of MacAsco that is in similar scale to the Village Center, while exploring additional mixed-use and infill commercial along Rattlesnake Trail. Incorporate new small open spaces to supplement and connect to the existing larger open spaces. Explore new infill development with relocation of the, with the potential relocate, well, in order for this plan to move forward, it really relies on the relocation of the Village of Pinehurst Public Services Complex. And then provide a connected net, street network that will help to alleviate traffic congestion on Rattlesnake Trail. And really, this, this area is pretty well-served by, by, by a collector, a feeder and collector system, and we'll, and I'll show you those roads as we get into this. Any questions? Just jump in, ask a question as we go. Here is the locator map, so you can see Village Place and Pinehurst South on this map. Site aerial, then we get into some background material on Pinehurst. Previous plans and studies. Now, this is another important section of the document, because we, the consultant, we looked at these previous, these previous plans were utilized in developing some of the recommendations in the, in the small area plan. So you look at the 2019 Comprehensive Plan, we wouldn't have the recommendations that we have without the 2019 Comprehensive Plan, that, that was a lot of work put into. We have the 2015 Comprehensive Bike Plan and Pedestrian Plan, that was used, as you start to see how, where, when you see the layout of the sidewalks and, and the circulation, it was utilized. You look at the, the Village of Pinehurst, the thoroughfare plan, they looked at the 20, 2010 Comprehensive Plan, and looked at the, the Historic Landmark nomination. One thing I did forget about, or I didn't mention on the Village Place, a, a good share of the Village Place is actually in the Historic District. So anything that, we, we have to figure, we have to figure out what, how to handle that, but it would generally be, everything goes through an HPC anyhow for, for, for the congruity test. Questions? The next session was the PDO Assessment Summary. What this is, is, it's a listing of, of concerns potentially with the PDO, and how it would impact the potential implementation of these plans. So that, just, it goes through and identifies some of the standards. Matt?
This section on, on both reports, I kind of found them, I guess, like most kind of teedy, interesting, I'm sorry. I found it interesting just because it kind of started to kind of get at what are the pre-changes that maybe need to be made to pave a way for the Form-Based Code? Is, and is that, is that the thought here? I mean, I'm, some of these are just, I, I didn't see maybe the immediate relation to Form-Based Code, but they were looking for consistency within zoning, is that more of what it is, or is it?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. And it's just, it's just looking at what, what the current issues are with their PDO as it relates, it doesn't really even get into the Form-Based Code aspect of it, but it's just picking up on what the, even if we didn't pass, say, we didn't do anything with the Form-Based Code, these would be some of the issues that we'd have to deal-
Address it anyway.
Correct.
It, it did seem a little out of place in the sense that it dove into a level of detail in the middle of the document that seemed out of place in many ways.
You think so?
I mean, we're going to get to that level of detail, obviously, at some point.
Yes, we will.
But in the middle of the document, a strategy document, it seemed a little strange to be having such very specific recommendations.
We told them to do it, so.
Just an, just an observation.
Nope, I get it, Jack. All right, existing conditions. So we start to get through the existing conditions, and, and within this area, we have the existing illustrative plan, figure ground plan, Historic District Plan diagram, Street Network diagram, Posted Speed and Traffic Control Plan, Land Use Plan, Zoning Plan, Topography, Open Space, Market Analysis. So that's all part of this section. There's a lot in here. I mean, we, we have, we actually have a separate existing conditions document. It's on, it's on the project website, you can download that, too. But some of the highlights have been included in this document. So you see all the develop, you see some of the development in the area, you can see some tired development, you can see some new development. This is just the illustrative site plan. And basically what it's showing is it's showing the development pattern. So you can see the, you can see the contours on the map, you can see the existing development. Just to, this, when you're looking at this, this shows you from a redevelopment and development standpoint, you know, what is going to be the potential difficulties with any type of redevelopment in this area, meaning, and part of it's because there's a lot of development already occurring in this area. And there's a lot of lot, small lot sizes. So if you get up here between Rattlesnake and, Rattlesnake and McIntyre, you know, over by the Tater Barn and Maxi's and all that, those parcels are relatively small. So for them to redevelop on their own is going to be, is going to be tough, but it's, so really somebody's going to have to get in there and acquire several parcels to create a decent redevelopment site. So that's going to be one of the difficulties in, in that area, to get, to get any traction going because of those small, those small previously developed sites. Figure ground, this is just shows you can, the, the existing structures are just, they pop on the map, so you can see, so you can see how, how the, how the pattern is set. Here's the Historic District, as we were just talking about before, you can see the Historic District pretty much covers a lot of Village, a lot of the Village Place area. MacAsco, you can see south of MacAsco, and basically east of Rattlesnake to, until you get to the north there by Board Branch, Board Branch, road over here, I think that's it. So yeah, you can see that's just something we, we're going to have to contend with going forward from a review standpoint.
Question on that?
Sure.
Not too much of a rabbit trail, but did those, the border for the Storg District, does that get changed or expanded? Because I, I see that part on Rattlesnake, and it, where it cuts across to the west side, and I kind of thought, wow, it's kind of interesting that it jumps over, and just for that little section, is that, was that added later, or is that kind of always a part of it?
Or the original plan. The, the boundaries have not changed on the historic, local historic district.
And normally they wouldn't, I mean, would you, did properties get added sometimes?
Major effort to redefine the, the boundaries of the Historic District. Can be done, but-
Right.
Council and, and some other-
I defer to Jack on all things history here, so. Existing street network. So you can see the existing street network, it is pretty well-developed with streets. So you can see Rattlesnake Trails is the major road coming in, it's a collector street, coming in off of Arterio, which is, which is 211 up here. And then it's fed into MacAsco, which is a collector, Magnolia's a collector, Kelly's a collector, because it goes out to an Arterio. So, so there's a, what, there's a pretty good, in, in part of this area, it's a pretty good block set up from a, from a transportation standpoint. So you can see, it's very well-connected. Then you can see the, the red dot circles indicate dead ends in the, in the, in the system. So you can see, and, and really where we, we started to look at that is in Village, in the core area, how do we connect these roads to bring the roads through? And I think when you see some of the, the later renderings, we did find an area to bring, I think it's Power Plant, through over here. So, and then up here, that we had a lot of discussion on what we should do with the street network, and you're going to see that in the maps, north of MacAsco, between Rattlesnake and Magnolia.
The lines that are shown were what would be the extension of Kelly, where it looks like it's cleared there, is that because the, the right-of-way actually does extend up to Magnolia?
I believe it does.
It just wasn't, hasn't ever been developed down that way?
Just hasn't happened, because the, the top, the topography, I think, is real, is real tough through there.
Yeah, yeah, the contours are nuts.
So this is the Posted Speed and Traffic Control, so you can see, there's a lot of traffic, there, there's a lot of stop signs. The stop signs become important as, when traffic is using Kelly or Medlin, you know, or Kelly or Short, Fields, any of that stuff, coming out of this, into this, or out of this area, the, the stop signs are going to help slow down that traffic going through, going through this neighborhood a little bit. Land use, this shows that, if you look at the land use map, there's a lot of different land uses in this area, it is a mixed-use area, mixed-use neighborhood itself. And then you can see we have, you know, some old, we have some industrial in here, right in here, in the core, kind of that core area, you've got the brewery down here, retail. So you see, we have, we've got a mix of residential, industrial, vacant, civic retail, so there's, there's a lot of uses in, in this area. We've seen this before, but this is, this is the existing zoning map of the area. And then the, the existing zoning and permitted uses, what, what they did is just, within each of the districts, took the, the districts that were mapped and showed what type of uses could be allowed in, in that, could be allowed or is not allowed in those districts. Topography, you can see we're going to have to contend with topography as things move forward, especially, especially around the, around the Public Services Site towards the west, there's a ridge in there, and we have a road shown. So that's going to be, there's going to be some engineering work to be done to figure that out, and, because there is that ridge coming through here. Open space and trails. This area of the community has got a pretty good, has got a pretty good network of open space, trails, and sidewalks. Now, you're going to see some recommendations later on within this document to improve and build upon, and build upon that, that system. But you can see, and you can see there's like, there's areas where, where you don't have it, like between Rattlesnake here and Woods, and all the way down to MacAsco, there's, there's not a, there's not a pedestrian system set up over into that area. But you can see it's, there's, from a circular standpoint, you do get, you can circle the areas around pretty good, but you can't get through some of these areas. So when you start to see the, the road layout, it does start to connect this neighborhood. Any questions? Just jump in. Market analysis. This is another separate document that we had, where the, where the consultant had looked into, you know, the, the market for various uses within, what, the market?
At a point in time.
At a, correct, Jack, at a point, it's always at a point in time. So the retail, I mean, they looked at retail, they looked at office, they looked at hospitality, so for-sale residential, for, for rent residential, so they looked at all those things. Did it, did it, did it form? Did it create the plant, no, did it, did it drive the planning? No, it didn't drive the planning, we stood, we looked at it and, and understood it, but it didn't drive all the planning. So we go down to Village Place, strengths, location close to Village Center, provides a strong foundation, Community Center, Cannon Park, it's walkable to the Village Center, large number of amenities, strong brand of Pinehurst, and some development, redevelopment already occurring, Pinehurst Brewery. The weaknesses, and this is it, some of the properties are older, there are parking challenges, and there's a limited amount of available land. So that is, you know, that, that is a challenge. Opportunities build off the success of the Historic Village Center. Growth in the nearby neighborhoods, those nearby neighborhoods are real stable. Redevelopment of public, of the Public Works Site is an opportunity, that's a catalyst site, between that and Moore County, those are two catalyst, catalyst sites in the, in the Village Place area. Close to redevelopment of other older properties, which you're starting to see a little bit of. of, and then close to NC 211, which is it, you know, that is a major thoroughfare providing traffic. Threats and challenges, inability to create a strong link between Village Core and Village Place. And that's, that is difficult. It's difficult because of the land uses and, the land uses between the Village Core and the Village Place, there's, there's some residential land uses in there. So that's where it creates that connection, it's harder to ma, it's harder to make. Not being able, the, the biggest threat in the, in the core of the Village Place area would, would be not being able to move the tanks and public works. Those, those would be the, that would be the biggest threat to achieving anything south of McCaskill. Then we just get into some.
What's the primary threat there? Having a space to relocate them to?
That, too. I mean, we, you've seen some of the discussion on Pinehurst South, that we, we put that as a potential. It's a potential, no more, no more than a potential at this point. The zoning, the zoning actually down, that we're, we're showing it, potentially showing it in Pinehurst South, the zoning would actually allow it to occur down there right now. But it's just a potential. They are, I'm not part of the, they are looking at other locations. So we have the thing, we have the land out on Juniper Creek, it's pretty wet out there, so there's, there's, but they're, they're looking at all the options. And they're, they're looking, do you just put one part of the operation over there, move another part of the operation over there somewhere else?
What are those tanks? There's like fuel storage tanks?
Nope, those are water. These were water, they're not used anymore, right?
Oh, okay, over by the brewery.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think the use of the word threats is, it's clearly, these are challenges, but I don't know if threats is the right word to, but it doesn't matter.
Well, I think that's kind of a, just a standard SWOT analysis type, you know, that they probably use from the consultants, and I think that probably may be why they use the word challenges there.
The challenges are appropriate.
Yeah.
I guess it's the threat to the plan ever being implemented, I guess that's the way to phrase it.
You could look at it that way. Yeah, you could look at it that way, Jack.
It does, but if you're, if you're, if you can't connect the Village Core and Village Place, and you can't move, you know, the public services, then a lot's off the table.
You're right, because you're only looking at that stuff really down Rattlesnake, and that's not the exciting part of this plan. I mean, it's good that we're going to do something with it, and we're going to see some development, but I think the, you know, the vitality of the plan is really south of McCaskill. I think that's the core area. Then we get into some basic, basic statistics. This one down here shows, there's about 8,000 people coming in to Pinehurst, 3,900 leave, 11 who, 1,100 work and stay and, and live and work in Pinehurst. And what that map just, it shows that there's an opportunity potentially to capture some of the people that are leaving, to keep them in the community. This, again, more, more demographic data. A lot of it, I think we all understood, and it was picking up on some of the, some of that's in the comp plan as well.
So Darren, so just real quick, when we, when we, just a point that just hit my head, when we talk about giving our current citizens an opportunity to work close to home, it could also.
Digital village.
Yep. Well, we also could think about our, you know, retirement settlers and those who may want to do something different, it could create opportunities for them as well, I would imagine, in this scenario. So, of course, they're not going to leave the county to work, but they may go down into the village to work part-time as well.
Yes, and the other, the other thing that, you know, we'll get into.
Sure, sure, we could. Everything, everything that we talk about today is probably a can of worms that we could discuss an hour on, so.
And those are, those are, those are household numbers, it's not population.
Okay.
I was, I was, I was actually going to start on my, my short-term rental spiel, but I'll save that for later. All right, for sale residential, this shows, just shows, just showing what's, what was on the market at that point in time. So we did for rent residential, for sale residential. Retail, some of the retail, core retail developments in the area, what, what the average rental rate is, things like that. So we don't need to get into that, just know that it's in there, take a look at it. Hospitality, this is one, you know, there is, you know, according to what we're looking at from a market, there is room for some hotel keys in this market, whether it be Pinehurst South or even in Village Place. So they, they did recognize that, I think that, I think we showed, what, up to 66 keys in Village Place.
But Darren, as, to understand for me this, this section over these next few pages, so the conclusions that are drawn here, this is still a result of the market analysis.
Correct.
And what they're saying, protected to see growth, small or moderate load, it's all results of that.
Correct. And when you start to look at the, the absorption rates in the market, especially when you look at the absorption rates for, for office-type use, you know, we're not absorbing a lot of that, and that's why when we say that these are 50-year plans, they're not really 50-year plans, that, the, it goes out of 50-year timeframe because that's how long it would take to absorb this stuff. These plans really have a shelf life of seven to 10 years. That's the average, that's the active life of a, of a plan, it's generally about seven to 10 years. Then you have to, then you look at it again, we did it with that new core, we do it with comp plan, do it every 10 years. So depending on the plan, you have to freshen it up because things change over time. So yes, there are conclusions in here from the market analysis. Again, the market analysis, separate document, is, is on the website, project website. Oh, this would be kind of the summary of, of the mock overall market opportunity. So you can see on the upper, on the, the table on the upper left, overall market opportunity based, you see the, the check marks. That is the stuff that, from a market standpoint, works very well in our market, going down to not working very, as efficiently. So you see, what, one that probably is the concern potentially, because we do have a lot of square footage shown in both areas for office, it's the office. So the office right now, and again, point in time right now is, is rather weak. I talked to some office developers, they agree, it's a weak, it's a weak market for that right now. Retail is going to ebb and flow, but there's, there's some opportunity for retail, given, you know, given the Pinehurst brand and given, you know, some of the excitement that we could create down in that Village, Village Place area.
That office potential, we talk about that, it's so interesting, because, you know, five years ago, when we talked about Pinehurst specifically, it was arguably deficient in type A office space. And we talk about market changes within a short amount of time affecting something, that's a great example.
It does, market's going to, well, look at how long Trotter Hill sat, and now, now, now that thing is, there's not a lot of lots left in that, in that area to, to develop out, so it just got hot again, but it sat since, what, when was that developed, Jack? Nineties, nineties sometime?
Yeah, at least.
Yeah, but driving by there for at least 15 years, for sure. So I think, it may be premature for that type of question, but when we talk about, well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to wait until we get to there.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
Not to jump down Highway 5 before.
The other stuff shows a summary of demand, so how many, how many houses, and when they say almost anywhere, from a, from a market perspective, single-family is a strong, is a strong part of the market in Pinehurst, and I think in, in the area in general. So when they say it can go almost anywhere, it can go almost anywhere because you see houses developing almost anywhere in the market. And we changed it, through some of the conversations that we had with council on Village Place, we actually changed out some of the areas that were shown as residential, because we had the concern that we couldn't, A, you know, can't really control the quality of architectural, really outside of the, outside of the historic district. So we changed that, I think, north on Rattlesnake to offices. So you'll, you'll see the changes in the plan.
I just have one question for clarity for me. There's for-sale residential and for-rent residential, but the for-rent residential could be condominiums or cooperatives.
Yeah.
But it, but it implies to the community that we're just planning for rental units when, really, that needn't be, unless you include condominiums and cooperatives in for-sale residential. And I don't think that's explicit in here. Lots of folks don't want to read for-rent residential, so I, it's just my opinion. I mean, you know, we should show where that, I would think in the Village Place that they would welcome, you know, a low, low-scale condominium development, rather than, you know, rental all through there.
You're talking, when you say rental, or rental like the Greens, something like that?
I just, I just prefer it to be multifamily residential and explain that it could be a cooperative, which is different than a condominium, or rental.
Let me explain a little bit.
Difference between all of them.
I'm sure you're taking these notes.
Play or expand on your, your comment of low-scale residential or multifamily. Give me an idea of what you were thinking.
Or is it, it could be condominiums like that.
Yeah.
And that was not, I guess, apartment houses, but I, I sure wouldn't want to see anything in the whole three stories, right?
Sure. Okay, so you're, you're saying, hey, so maybe to affect some of the multifamily demand, we could take, you could take a look at some condominium-type developments.
Yeah, because I think there's some other, I think there are some other people besides, you know, kids that work for Pinehurst Resort or whatever. I think there are, you know, older folks that would love to have a condominium and not have to build a single-family house.
You mean like a single-family attached development? I think we showed that on some of the design.
Okay, that, that's fine, too. But it could be stacked.
It could be.
It's just a type of ownership.
Yep, correct, condo, sure.
Yep, I don't want to, I don't want to walk into a level of being scared of everything, but, you know, a lot of times when the developer sees an empty parcel of property, that there won't be zones multifamily, but he could put a condo scenario on there, he'll say, hey, I can't put apartments there, but what I could do is I could put condos there, and I could retain all the ownership and ultimately create a rental situation for myself. That's just a, just a thought.
Which is done in this market, yes.
Yeah, it's being done.
I don't know, I'd just like to say that they're permitted, that's all. I mean, if we're showing, if we're showing these things as rent, that's one type of ownership. I mean, it's one developer, one company that owns the building, and it's, you know, for rent, but.
But you're, you're saying maybe those categories aren't distinctive, really? Because the structure would be the same?
Right. It's something that happens a lot all around. They think about, cities think about, you know, for rent, because that's what citizens talk about, but in actuality, it's multifamily residential, and it could be in any of those char, characters.
Well, that's why I wanted to pick on your knowledge there a little bit, because I think it's something that, that will come up, and I think it's an answer that'll, you know, something we got to talk about of how to do that, and I was really interested, so thanks.
Bugaboo of mine, I guess.
Okay. We'll move on. This, again, market demand, just, just shows some of the market demand and absorption. And we start to see the phasing absorption plan in the, in the back of the document, this is kind of the numbers that were driving some of that stuff. Public outreach. I see a couple of members here. Polling questions that we did, public, so there's a summary of, there's a summary of some of the comments that, that we, that we received during, during the public workshops. And some of the public, the public workshops did drive some of the changes, there's a significant change that was done in public in Pinehurst South that, that we'll see later on. Public workshop number two, there's Jack and Julia. Public workshop summary, what was that? That's just your, oh, yeah. All right.
Have them contact our agent.
Section, section four, recommendations. So this is really where, this is really the meat of the document itself, is the recommendation section. This is where you start to see how the roads and land uses and, and all those connected places come together. It's really, it's really in this section. So again, we talk a little bit about the design here, we talk about transportation, guiding principles, start to talk a little bit about the form-based code, what the character of the area is. So spend some time there. Some of the planning principles, and really, this is, as you start to see the way the plans come together, create a connect, create a connected circulation network, I think we've done that. Incorporate complete street strategies, not, a complete street is nothing, it's just, streets are designed for not just the cars. It includes walkers, includes, they include bikes, things like that, golf carts. It's not just for streets, for, for the vehicle. Strengthen the building frontage. When we get, when we say strengthen the building frontage, that's to create that strong, that strong building character at the street, you know, so, so if you go down, go down along downtown, our Village Core area, you know, where those businesses are tight to, tight to the sidewalk generally, or close to the sidewalk, it creates a different environment when you're walking down, you want to stop in some of these places, you want to look and see what's going on, see what's happening. So part of what we're doing here is trying to come up with a development plan that creates, that strengthens the building frontage. And there are, when we get to the form-based code, that's where we really pick up on some of the stuff. And I know, Philip, you had, you had your fun time, was that, you had, were you working on that one in Aberdeen? Oh. All right. So design streets for flexible programming, that means you could close them off, have a block party, things like that. Provide a variety of public-type open spaces, and I guess both plans have a variety of open spaces, public and, and associated with development. And then promote health and wellness through neighborhood design, and that's really connecting people, create places to live, work, play, eat and shop. So if you could just, if you could do that all in your neighborhood, I think that's kind of that goal. Olmstead design principles, we'll get into that a little bit. Here's the original plan. Then we wanted to, then we wanted to, showed some images of some of, some of the various developments, and we're trying to get a reaction on, you know, streetscape, parking, residential look, so that, that just is informing some of the.
Hey Darren, I, I had a problem with understanding the legend, one and two, whether, and it's in these pages.
There is no legend, is there? That's a good point. Oh, participant encouraged to respond.
I mean, one, two, three, four, five, I don't know what that means, to tell you the truth.
That's a good point. I know what the red and green means in general, I don't know.
I guess, in theory, I meant, I guess, green is good and red is bad, I don't know.
Yeah, no, well, it does say that, said, if you look, go to the last sentence, in the second paragraph, "Participants were encouraged to respond like with green dots or dislike with red dots to each photo." The, the numbers within the green and red dots indicate the number of, the number of stakeholder responses.
Oh, a red number one means that it was the most disfavorable, is that the idea?
That's how I read it.
Not, okay. And yet it was number two as far as acceptance.
Architecture is... All right, party block diagram. So you can, so this was one of the original, I think this was from the, from what is the high-intensity plan, so you start to see how the, the road, the road sections are coming together, and you'll see in the, in the, in the final plan, this doesn't look like anything in, in the final recommended plan, but you can see how we did try and create a connected set of streets through the area, so we, so these red dots here, so we connected those areas. So you can see the thorough, the through connections in, in those areas. The only one we're not connecting is this one over here. No, this one is being connected, so.
What does parti mark, or parti mean? Part, with an I?
Parti block?
I know.
Just, it, it really, it's, we need a better explanation for that.
I Googled it, but I was not able to find it from Google.
Was it in the Urban Dictionary?
So it was the question.
Well, I didn't go that far.
But the party block diagram illustrates the approach in plan form, so that, so the diagram shows a proposed addition of new streets forming new blocks and creating a more connected street network. So it's showing, it's showing the creation of blocks throughout the, the plan area, which will start to set up for the regulating plan later on.
Maybe like partition.
I'll look at, I'll, I'll look, I'll try and see what that actually, what that actually means in, in our lingo.
Hey Darren, I've got a question concerning the proposed connecting streets as, as well, because I think if some of the challenges are kind of worked out, it, it seems to me that this may float up as, as one of the true opportunities to have some plan implementation, I believe. And so, will you kind of explain to us as the board some of the steps that would take place in creating these connecting streets from a development standpoint, from, you know, a summation of, of the property's standpoint, from a, from any sort of developer? And then, at, at this point in time, I guess what we're looking at today is conceptualized, right? That is kind of proposed from, from the consultants, is, is that right? So in reality, these streets could end up being totally different, in a way. So in reality, these streets could end up being totally different in a way. Is, is that, is that the way that I'm reading it, or this is what we ultimately want?
I mean, they could be, they could be different. They could not be built at all. I mean, you have to put things in place to allow it to, to develop. So in order, in order to get the, in order to get this development south of McCaskill through here, there's a lot that has to happen. A, we have to get rid of the public services complex. B, we have to deal with the county, both the county and the emergency service, the ambulance site, and the water tank site. So all those things have to fall into place from an implementation standpoint for us to then, you know, move, move forward with installing streets as proposed right here. So that's, and we're not, you know, the developer who's building the street, do we have to participate in any way, shape or form? Probably not, or maybe we do. It just depends on.
What I'm trying to achieve here is really just a board understanding of some of the steps that would take place that would achieve what we're looking at. And, and so some of those obviously would be moving of the public works. We're talking about some, some water buildings, water, water containers. We're also talking about some other private property that maybe there's some businesses. And so that.
Oh, that.
Yeah, yeah, so we're talking about a lot. Can you talk about some of the challenges that would take, need to take place, or some of the steps? And to, and then we, and then obviously a developer would then approach the village and state, I'm ready to, I want to develop this property. And then we would hope, or at least work forward, follow them. I'm leading you, so you tell me where I'm wrong, to, to something that would look like this.
The plan, the plan establishes the vision. It's not, it's not a construction plan. It's not a design plan. It really, you know, any developer, anybody in the residence of a community, the residents of the neighborhood living next door, they pull, they pull at the plan, and this is the vision for what that area could, if we end up approving this plan in this form, this is the vision. Developer, interested developer comes and goes, hmm, I'm interested in this land, land's for sale, look at it. And then you start working with us, the village, and trying to implement that plan. And that's, can the road actually go there? Where's the sewer and water going? Where's all, so all those things, you know, that, that all has to be hammered out post this. But this establishes that broad vision and framework. If I'm also moving into the area, you know, I moved next to, I moved next to one of these neighborhoods, and I want to see, well, what's the village's plan for this area? You know, what, so these help people who are moving into the area to understand what the long range or short range plans are for that, for, for the area. We get so many comments on people when they're surprised. Well, you've seen them. Every time we, we bring a subdivision plan through here, we get a bunch of people that are surprised that developable land is developing. You bought, if you buy next to vacant land, there's a good chance it's going to develop. If you, if you, if you're, the only place that you're really not going to get, if you're built, if you live on a cul-de-sac. But if you live on a dead end that's vacant, the street can get pushed through.
So just in my thoughts, of course, there's a lot of challenges and roadblocks there.
Oh.
However, in my thoughts, money and pressure seems to win out a lot. And when we talk about all the PDO steps and we talk about some of the rezonings in place, it's an, I don't want to lead you. It's, it's an opportunity really to establish the, the pathway of what we want to create. Is that kind of where I'm going?
Yeah, yes. That's.
Please help us as a board, not just me, understand a little bit more along with that.
The plan, the, the plans themselves, we, we have to get on board on what the plans, what these plans look like before we can move on step two and do the, do all the zoning changes. Because we can't waste our time on doing a bunch of zoning changes i- if, you know, if it doesn't happen with the plan. If we have to make some significant changes to anything in that plan, that's going to, that's going to change our tactic when it comes to making PDO amendments, when it comes to developing the form-based code. So we have to be generally on board with what is in these plans before we can really hammer through the form-based code and the PDO updates.
Without some village interest in creating the, the roadways ourselves, the probability would be that any sort of development in place would probably look a lot different. Sorry, I'm not trying to.
That's, that's my question, is, is it, does the village have to develop the roads, or do you look to developers? Is that, I mean, is that kind of like the village is a capital investor in this to say, we're going to kickstart it by building roads because we have right-of-way, or some of this right-of-way maybe is going to have to be acquired?
I don't make those policy decisions. There's one right here. It had, well, it could be, it could be both. I mean, if, if it's a residential subdivision, you know, why would we, why would we participate in any way? In the village core area, what we're trying to achieve, if we're trying to actually dictate a development pattern, we might, you know, we could dictate it by installing the road, if that means, if that means a lot, enough to us. So it's going to, it's going to be, it depends. Now, if you get down to Pinehurst South, when we get there, there are, we show networks of roads that develop, really, that really, you know, that would, I would think that those would be developer, that would be developer-driven.
Hey Matt, let me, let me bring you back to this a little bit more. So when you look at this right here with your experience, what do you see, certainly from a risk standpoint, what do you see in the future if no plan is implemented?
Uh, so on this plan, I mean, I just, obviously the topography is the first thing that jumps out at me, because that's any time you go to develop. And there's a, a reason some of that hasn't been developed because of grade and stormwater and all those things that are issues, but, you know, that doesn't stop development. I mean, obviously people develop on lots with stormwater issues all the time. I mean, look at neighborhoods and, I mean, Pinewild, they have stormwater issues, but there's development, so it'll continue. But I, I mean, I think if the lots are available to buy, people will develop. Given them the guardrails to, to run on, it's helpful, especially if it's in line with where the village wants to go. I was, I was thinking that, that the crossover, you know, the change between what we have now and what this potentially is going to look like. I mean, there are communities I'm sure that have done this and, and changed and had to kickstart, you know. Now, we've talked about some in the previous meeting about, you know, examples of form-based code in other places. Would it be helpful for us to go to some of these places to see? And, and, or say, hey, when you said this, what did you do? What's that?
I get it. We'll rent the bus and go.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm gunning for, is a field trip.
I mean, form-based codes can in fact specify the roadway, very specific information about the roadway, not just width and so forth, you know, design speeds and sidewalks and space things and landscaping. I mean, there's any number of things you can do through form-based codes. It seems to me there's, this, first of all, this is the high density.
That, that was the high, and we're, yeah, we're getting caught on, this is not the preferred layout.
There's, there's at least three different possibilities of four roads. One is we already have some right-of-way, for example, Kelly.
Yep.
Which the village could choose to enhance in, in, according to however the plan comes out. We have some undeveloped or developed parcels that could be developed by developers, and we could request that they, not just request, we could require them to develop the road system within that parcel, you know, a certain way, based upon the form-based code. And the third is that we have our, our public services area where we own the land, or we own a good portion of it, where the roads would be contemplated. And we can either, before we specify the developer, or allow a developer to build, we can specify exactly what kind of roads are to be put in and where, and their design. So we have a couple of different scenarios here that can play out within Village Place in particular.
In my old state, I would, we would just map those roads. You don't like mapping down here, but we would have just officially mapped it and the roads would have been there and they would have treated them as such.
Gotcha.
And we, we also would use TIF. TIF was an economic development tool that we use to install infrastructure and, and to, to help development, redevelopment occur. The TIF laws down here are, I think there's only been one TIF, tax incremental finding, financing. I think there's only been one district? No. I created like thirty of them. All right. So now what we're going to show you is the, the concept density, I'm taking a while here too, sorry. Concept Design Low Intensity Plan. So these are, these are what we, these are the images that we had shared for kind of the low intensity plan and high intensity plan. So what you're going to see is, and we probably should have named it something else, but so, when it lays out, it lays out the amount of square footage, the types of uses, things like that on the table, on the table above. And then you can just, again, see how the landforms kind of come together in, in the, in the low intensity plan. So you can see, you can see the connection of the roads in the, in the area below south of McCaskill. You can see what we originally proposed in the low intensity plan along Magnolia here. You see a bunch of single-family residences along that area. You see single-family residences behind the brewery. So you see the mixed-use building on the corner. So you can see the green space, how that, how that was developing out. And then you can see up here, as we get up north along Rattlesnake, we showed this all for, we showed this all as residential in the low intensity plan. When you see the, the final plan, you're not going to see, some of this has, has significantly changed. And you can see this kind of, this crossroads here, this crossroads is in the high intensity plan. That's where we have that, we have that rendering that shows, that shows the, that shows the, shows the area at, at ground level. So any, let, let's take a look. Any, any questions on this particular image that you're seeing?
Well, one, one comment, and something from the last public meeting, just I appreciate, it's in this plan and in the, in the high intensity, but they mentioned not doing the extension of Rattlesnake straight down to avoid thoroughfare. I mean, that just seems like a strategic move. So, no, I just thought that was well, well thought out.
And in that, on that, on that level, the, the original New Core Master Plan actually showed Rattlesnake going through the area. So this, what we've done with this plan is adjust and build upon what was previously done. So we changed, we, we made the adjustment.
Well, and it kind of makes me wonder about, is it McKenzie that's adjacent to that?
McCaskill, which, where are you looking at?
Uh, McIntyre.
Oh, McIntyre? Mm-hmm. What about McIntyre?
I guess it continues to a, a yield point, so it's not a, not a straight through.
Correct, it is not. And that was the intent. We did, we were trying to not create a, a straight shot right through the area. Make you have to think a little bit, slow down. All right. High-intensity plan, so this is a little bit higher density. You have more commercial uses that, that are shown, shown on this particular plan, so you're going to see a little bit more of that. So you can really see, I mean, again, we see the resident, we have residential here along Magnolia. You see, this is where we are proposing potentially a hotel in this area. Whether that would happen or not, but you can see how we're trying to create that strong building image or street frontage along these, along these new streets here. You can see that we're trying to do that along McCaskill, and see that we're trying to do that along Rattlesnake as well. And the codes will, the codes will have a strong street frontage element to them. And then you can see the, you can see the connected green space. And this was trying to, you know, trying to pay homage to the, the Olmsted plan. We're trying to get some curvilinear streets in here, but you only have so much, there's not a lot of room here to do that. So, again, it's an image showing what, what could potentially be. And then you can see in the high-intensity plan, which came all the way off in, in the preferred version, north of McCaskill by the greens, where we had, where had that parcel split with a road, another road coming in south of Kelly, a residential development in the green area. That has all changed in the, in the later renderings of the plan.
Okay, so down at the core, where you've got the hotel, and in low density, it was, I guess, a couple restaurants, it was restaurants around there?
Probably, you know, it could be a restaurant, again, it's illustrative.
Well, sure, that, I'm just trying to understand in the.
But, yes, another restaurant, the one behind brewery is supposed to be a restaurant, and as you go up the street a little bit, those were intent to, the intent is live-work units.
But is that, is that something that the, the code, form-based code dictates? I mean, or is it, like, you can't, I mean, you don't know in what we're developing, if it's going to be a restaurant or a hotel. I mean, somebody could come and do either, but that's not to the level of specificity that we're going to get in what we put together.
We're, we're.
Eventually, the form-based code will define the building types and so forth, but there could be an overlay of use specifications for the area also. So it could be a little bit of both.
You could, I mean, you could control the building form in the block to the point where it's a restaurant. Or you could control the underlying zoning, so, but you're going to get, we'd have to think through that because you're going to get real specific. Let's, we got to get the regulating plan. Once we get the regulating plan.
Oh, that's, that's helpful, because I just, you know, trying to understand how, how specific we, we would get and what that would be.
It's tough to micromanage this at this stage.
City, you can put whatever you want anywhere, but people don't always.
All right. Any other questions on this image? This. Now, this is a beautiful rendering. Some people won't think it's beautiful. It's a very nice rendering of what the area could look like in fifty years. People will see that right now, and there'll be a visceral reaction that that's going to happen right now. It's not. Ensuring everybody here that this is not going to happen right away. It just shows how this could look fifty years. I will not be here on this earth when that develops out. So it's a long-term frame. It just shows how this area could come together in the future, and you can see it. I mean, look around Pinehurst Brewery, where we created that, where, you know, these could be mixed-use, this could be SFA, single-family attached, here's that restaurant. So you can see, it just, it creates a strong, you can see how, how this could come together. And you can see elements of the village core in here with these, with these live-work units north of that road that, that by, that spine going through. So you can just see the development pattern that could develop, not necessarily that it is going to develop. You're right, when we talk about the roads and all that, roads have to develop for this to occur. The nice thing that we have is we have the control over a lot of the land in that core area. Here is that image of ground level. So you're looking back towards the brewery. You can see the brewery smokestack. And this is showing that strong street frontage that's being created by, because we want the buildings to be closer to the street. We want strong public space element. The form-based code does take a, does look at everything from the building, from the edge of the building to the street. So that, that is a, that's part of that place-making effort. And you can see, you know, all these buildings, now we, you don't see the architecture, you don't see the materials, you don't see things like that. But what you start to see on these elements is you, you see all the fenestration. You see the sunlight, you see the windows. That's, that's what, that's really what is, what we're trying to achieve and what the form-based code will, will start to prescribe in these areas, active street frontage.
So Darren, just real quick, I won't stop you too long. You know, I think pictures scare us a lot, right? Okay. I, I think it's okay to say that. I think that's, that's proven now. Maybe the consultants didn't necessarily know that. And, and I think that we, we had it with the previous consultants as well, when we were talking about the comp plan. You know, the pictures kind of scared us, scared our community. I, I like to think that what they were possibly trying to do is help us as a community, help us, you know, as citizens to, I guess, measure the horizon a little bit and maybe forecast. And I know we, we, we've said the term fifty years out, this is what it could be. Well, I still think that scares people. You know, that fifty years from now, that this is what it could be. And I think we feel a little bit, you know, of the, the Pinehurst patriotism to make sure that doesn't happen. And I think that's at least some feeling, right? So I think it's important for us to, I guess, get an idea and a grasp, certain for us as a board, to not only forecast the horizon for fifty years, but forecast the horizon for one year, five years, ten, fifteen, and, and understand the steps involved there. And, and just understand it's going to change, right? So we talked about, you know, the change in the office, and we understand that, that the pressures today aren't going to be the same pressures in five years. You know, debt lending may not be the same, which could affect all kinds of development. And so I think it's important, I just want to make that statement, kind of on top of the whole picture scare us a little bit, and how we can help everybody to forecast what may be reality a little bit. Fair?
Some might, some might say fear, others might say hopeful.
Hopeful? No, good point. You're right. All right, that's a good, that's a good way to say it too.
And pictures are the heart of form-based code, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of the idea, is you got to have them in there. So it's having the right ones, like you're saying, to, that communicate what, what this should look like. I mean, I mean, I look at this and I kind of see, I mean, you see elements of, you know, downtown Pinehurst now around, you know, the, the park and the Holly Inn. I mean, there's, there's elements that I see there that kind of remind me of that. And, and I think, okay, well, we want to accomplish some of the feel that's there, but extend it to this area, but.
Yeah, I think the consultants probably didn't articulate very well the fact that the form-based codes can lead to a design similar to this. In other words, the road is a certain width, there's parallel parking, the setbacks, the buildings kind of line up, there are certain heights, you know, in the facades and the, you know, and the glass in the front, you know, and retail and the, so they didn't really kind of explain that how this picture is just a representation of what form-based codes can driving. I think.
Create can prescribe.
Pretty hard to do in a big meeting, that's for sure, but. Particularly at that.
We're going to get there.
I know you will.
We're going to get there. Together, together.
We believe in you.
All right, now the detail plan. So we focus in on this core area. So this is just a, this is just focusing in and really showing how that development pattern could. So this is just focusing in and really showing how that development pattern could develop in kind of that core area.
And this is the same for the high and the low density?
Yeah.
It's pretty much the same in both scenarios. Is that correct?
The core is, in the low scenario...
A little bit different.
Yeah, it's...
For the most part, it's the same.
Yeah, for the most part, it is the same. It's just at that crossroads, I think we show that, kind of that hotel in there. But yeah, it's basically the same. And the big thing that changed between one of the original plans is we originally had planned on potentially taking this road up to Community Road through here, through the fire station and the old fire station and this. Through, you know, some of the, through the hours I spent with council, we ended up moving Power Plant Road as Power Plant Road being the one coming down. And that's, and they readjusted the plans based on that. So it takes into account, there's some land right behind Frank Mazur here. He's got a big parcel land. This would actually, this could fall into how his development would go. I've talked with Frank about the plans and Frank's been supportive.
At the land we swapped a few years ago? Okay.
Any questions on this? And you can see, the other thing you're starting to see here, too, is we want the parking lots behind. We don't want the parking lots in front. We want them to be behind our side. I know retailers don't like that. I know that, but it looks so much better.
That's a big portion of where I think that we're going as a development society. And well, is that a big portion of the, you know, of other things as well, I believe, right? A lot of the parking behind and a lot of open spaces.
Yeah, I mean, that's where we're going with the form-based code. That's where, we have some of those elements in Pinehurst South that, for that overlay that Jack discussed. We're going that way with the form-based codes.
So parks fall under the same category as roads, whereas the village could do it or it could be something that a developer would do as a part of another. But if the village wanted to kickstart things, then doing a park is something that...
There's two things. We're creating with the plans, we create some public open space. And then when we get more into, there's a recommendation that all development outside of individual, single-family has to provide at least 8% of their area into public open space. So small connected park, open space on the site, not just setbacks, not stormwater areas, an active potential green space area.
And they could potentially center those if they had multiple lots and...
Correct. Correct, I mean, yep. Somebody, they did that kind of out there with Walker Station. Walker Station's got some connected green spaces out there.
I just need to understand something. Is this from Community Road into the high-density development there? Is that a walking trail? You said you wanted to do a road, but now it's just walking.
Yeah, we wanted, yeah, we haven't decided how. It could be a golf cart, you're right, maybe.
Can you highlight that? I'm sorry.
What was that?
Where is that? I'm sorry.
It's got the label there, New South Street Connection.
Right. Can you see my pointer here?
For sure, okay, thank you.
This is it. This used to be that road. And we thought it was important to create a more direct connection to the village center.
It is a connection to the village, which we've been looking for, I assume, with this whole plan.
Yeah, we...
We ought to sneak a couple more in. Yeah, you know, it's just a walking trail or...
Yeah, we think we need to have more of those connections because you're coming right down from the Pinecrest over there, too. So you could walk through the Pinecrest lot through down here, I would think. No, Pinecrest over here, never mind. It's just precedent images. What was, what symbol precedent images? Now, proposed open space and pedestrian network. So now you see how we start to bring the pedestrian network and the street network together on the map. And you can see that, you know, we tried along Rattlesnake with Kelly. We're just simply showing, we're showing a sidewalk here. I think there's one plan that shows a potential road going through there. That doesn't have to happen to make the plan work. I've heard that the pedestrian connection is much more important than the street connection. And that could be, you can see how it just adds to the network by putting something over there. Same thing over here, right off, extending Midland, not with the street, but extending it with a pedestrian connection, just to create a better connected system of streets. Now, we don't say what type of material right now because we have the discussion whether it's brick, whether it's sidewalk, whether it's San Colite Pass. I mean, I think we still need to figure that out. We're just, for now, we're showing what that connection looks like.
Are the existing, I guess, sidewalk and pedestrian plans tied to development? Or could those progress independently?
Both. So when somebody, we've got somebody we're dealing with right in that area, we'll make them put in sidewalks. We're actually going to make them put in brick pavers. But independent, when we did the Cannon Park, when it connected Cannon Park to the school, that was something that we did. So most of it is going to probably be driven by development unless there's some priority that we need to fill a gap somewhere. Here's, we had a long debate, long debate on the amphitheater. We kept the amphitheater on there. It could be, again, it shows the potentiality. Doesn't make it happen because it's on the plan, doesn't make it happen. But people did actually react...
Who doesn't like my amphitheater?
What was that?
Who doesn't like my amphitheater? It's the best part of the plan, as far as I'm concerned. I agree.
I think it's the term amphitheater, if possible.
Okay.
Well, they thought, because of across the street, because of the park across the street. That's why there is, because we have a lot of green space across the way we could put an amphitheater over there.
But I think that picture, that's quite interesting.
We can call it a bandstand.
Oh, that's what you want to say. Aiming at those neighborhoods.
It sounds so old-fashioned.
I know. It's on the plan yet.
All things older, good.
It hasn't moved, Julia. See, it's right, see this, right there?
I want it. I tell you, you're going to be putting my name on it before it's all over.
All right.
I can see that, yeah.
Develop it and get the sidewalks there. That'll be...
Need a donor to kick things off.
The next section is the trips and transportation. I'll let you read through it. Everything in here generates trips. Everything that we do is going to generate some level of trips. Commercial uses, retail uses generate more than commercial uses. Office uses generate more than high, multiple family, which generates more than single family. So anything that we do short of making a forest preserve is going to develop some level of trips. So we have to be cognizant of that. There's trips, whether we, right now, things can develop. They're going to develop, they're going to generate trips. So they go into a little bit of analysis on this, on the trip generation. And those trips are going to go, they're going to use the networks to get out of town, to get to town, to the neighborhood and out of the neighborhood.
What's defined as a trip? I'm sure it says it somewhere right in there, but, you know, the way I view it, and, you know, if someone disagrees or thinks of it differently, please let me know. But if somebody comes to the village now, say they, their goal is to go have lunch, you know, downtown, and then they want to do some shopping, they might park on, you know, one of the streets in front of Gentleman's Corner or the parking lot next to the Village Green. But if they wanted to go, you know, further down, if they wanted to go to the brewery or the, I guess, the Pinecrest Center's pretty close there. But they might not be willing to walk, so they would get in their car and drive there because there's no streets. But if this is developed with connectivity, the initial trip to the village still exists, but if you can walk to the rest of the stuff...
Really, when we start to talk about trip generation, it's really looking at the uses that are in there. So it's just a generalized number that's taken from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, right? So it's just a generalized number. It's this type of use creates this amount of trips. That's how we're looking at it. And some of the trips that are generated, they discuss it in the plan, they're pass-through trips or they're capturing some, like you're talking about, they're capturing some of the existing uses that are in there.
Here's the definition I found. A trip is one-way person movement by a mechanized mode of transport having two trip ends. So if it's a down and back, that would be two trips, depending on if you stopped or turned around.
No, that anything is going to generate trips. So now we start to talk about, or start to show images of what the street, there's some traffic calming that we threw in there because we're always, and rightfully so, we're concerned about traffic flying through neighborhoods. So there are various methods that you could do to, you know, to control some of that or calm some of that. So I was just putting it there over some concerns that we'd heard. Proposed circulation plan. This simply shows the proposed, at the end of the day, this is what we're proposing from a street perspective. We're still showing Kelly going through, but it doesn't have to go through. It just shows that it could potentially go through because I think it's reflecting the existing pattern that's there with that parcel that we own. So this just shows the pattern again. This shows an image of what Rattlesnake could look like if we do some improvements. So you can see on the left is what Rattlesnake looks like now. On the right is what Rattlesnake could look like in the future. Sidewalks on one or both sides, travel lanes. You see that seven-foot planting strip where we could put, you know, trees, things like that. And then we get into proposed commercial street sections. So you can see, you can see in the image what the width of the sidewalk is, what the setback is in some of these things that we're showing. We want you to set back 10 feet. We want you built out 10 feet, things like that.
I think this thoroughfare design within the form-based code is far more critical than people give it credit for. I mean, it dictates to a great extent, you know, the whole look and feel of the street and the pedestrian experience and so forth. So it's really important.
Then we could talk about the preferred buildup plan, form-based code. So you can see at the end of the day, this is what kind of the square footage that they were looking at for the preferred plan, which is, this is kind of what we ended up on a while ago. Last October, I think. Again, all subject to change going through this process. But this was, this is where we ended up. There wasn't a lot of changes. Magnolia still, Magnolia will become an issue again. We're showing commercial on Magnolia. And the big change that we had was right here. Midland Road along Rattlesnake would be, we're proposing non-residential in that particular area, whereas the previous iterations had shown some residential in that area. Market summary, talk about that again. Phasing absorption plan. So this is showing, when we say it's a 30-plus-year plan, this is just showing how much area would absorb in the planning areas in the timeframe. So you can see in zero to five, that doesn't necessarily mean that's going to happen in that particular area. It just shows the build-out. It just shows it's going to take time. If I did this in five different, I should have probably, I could do this in one, two, three, four, five, six different or five different maps and you would have seen the development come on. But it's a long-range plan and it's based on the absorption rates in the market at this time. Then we get a little bit into the chapter five, some implementation. There's some implementation that we've got to move to the back of this. But really, the main part of this was that fiscal analysis. The fiscal analysis didn't drive the plans. They were told to use 2017 land use fiscal analysis. I know that there's a lot of debate on the accuracy of that plan. This just shows, okay, if we go this direction, this is the potential impact. It wasn't driving anything. It just shows the potential fiscal impacts on the community. And that's all I have really on Village Place. Are you ready for another hour of Pinehurst South?
You know, I got the feeling from the public input that I've been able to assess is that there's less controversy involved in Village Place plan than there is in the Pinehurst South. That the overall concept of a, you know, the scale of things, you know, not at the high-density plan, but I think there was a general agreement that that's probably the way we ought to go. There's a few decisions to be made in this area, but I got the feeling that Village Place was generally reasonably well-accepted by the public. I don't know if anyone else got any feelings about that.
I think the impression is expanding the charm and character of the current village that we have, then yeah, I feel the same way. I feel like it's, you know, mostly positive.
Right, managed correctly, I think it could be incredibly important.
Correct codes in place.
Hey, how are we feeling as a board? Do we need a couple minutes for a bathroom break or are we prepared to jump right into the next? Everybody prepared to jump right into the next?
We'll try and get this done within a half hour for you.
Half hour? Okay, so another half hour. So one of the things that was important to me to make sure that we had this meeting and make sure that us as a board addressed it with staff or was given the privilege to address it and make sure that we had the questions is we have a lot of knowledge on this board and what we do every day. And we all have something to, I guess, something to give towards this planning process. So would you allow me to just go around real quick and make sure we all have the opportunity to go ahead and say something, kind of what's in our head, our initial thoughts, maybe what our, maybe what our expertise is? And let's go ahead and do it towards the Pinehurst South initially. Can we do that? Go ahead, and Philip, is there anything you want to input here? Call you out?
Everybody on the edge of their seats?
He just had a baby.
Please, go ahead. You've been kind of quiet and you're the reason why I wanted to do that.
Well, Philip was late, so he gets to start.
That's fine. So this is a general comment. Since I've been on the planning board, it seems like we're trapped in this cycle of like analysis paralysis. And we are continuously doing this, whether it's a new administration coming in and, you know, whatever the case is. But it seems like it's, you know, we have 2015, 2017 fiscal, 2019, 2022. At what point do we start taking some actionable items and putting them on the agenda and moving forward with it? Because I kind of feel like, and this is just, you know, this is not pointing fingers, this is just asking. I know my character flaws, I'm an impatient human. So at what point do we start doing that?
That's the, the next step in order to, again, we need to get on the same page. But the follow-up steps are going to be the form-based code and the PDO updates that will implement these things. That is the big ticket item we have to work on next. The other part of this plan is you still have to deal, if you want it, got to deal with the Moore County water tanks and got to deal with the public services site. Those are the two main things. That I can't address. Again, there's a decision policymaker in the room. But we can, the code updates was something that we are going to start on. Again, I have moratorium running out that we are going to have to start working on that again so we can get that in place. Try not to extend it again, but...
And I know government is slow, right? It's a slow animal by nature, but it's just curiosity. I agree with Jack's assessment of the character of the village and the streetscapes. I think that's very important. And, you know, there may have to be a discussion of a TIF-type vehicle, which, you know, my personal character don't really agree with, but sometimes it has to be done. And it's essentially a bond, for those that don't know, a temporary bond to pay for, whether it's sidewalks or roads or hardscapes, whatever the case is. But I would like to see the center extension of the village, of the character of the village, be probably the priority in this. Pinehurst South is just such a, and look, I say that as somebody who owns property down there. It's such a hodgepodge of properties and the character is all over the place. I mean, even Trotter Hills, it's all over the place. And that's relatively new development in there. So opinion-wise, I just, I think the core is probably the priority in all this. That's more of opinion.
We'll have the opportunity again, when we address Pinehurst South, again, we'll kind of do another little quick round. Something comes up.
That's all, that's all I have.
Nobody really wants my professional input unless there's some hazardous waste that needs to be removed from any of these areas. My personal opinion, I concur with what Jack is saying. I think that this is a direction that we can go that's going to enhance the village. It's going to make it more of a draw. It's going to make it more vibrant. It's going to make it more exciting for our families who live here, but I think also for folks who want to come here. You know, we hear a lot when we talk about Pinehurst is golf by day, arts by night. I challenge you to show me the arts by night. You know, other than, you know, live after five when the weather is nice, we really don't have, you know, other than the occasional band at the drum and quill, anything that feels like arts by night. And I think if this is managed properly, we can begin to create that kind of feeling. You know, if the right restaurants come in with the right kind of entertainment... you know, if the right restaurants come in with the right kind of entertainment, if the amphitheater is built. You know, there are some opportunities here to create a more vibrant community for our families who are here, but also as a destination attraction. And I realize we have to balance those two things, you know, no, but nobody wants to live in a, you know, an overwhelming resort community. That, that isn't why people, why the residents have moved to Pinehurst. But this provides us an opportunity to, I think, make good on that motto in a way that we are not currently.
Yeah, I, I agree with Philip and Julius on, on this one. I'm a little anxious to get started and get to the execution phase here, and I, I think that the plans as they sit today are close, and we could in fact close them out by making about, I think there's probably a dozen different specific decisions that could be made relative to the plans, both in Village Place and Pinehurst South, and I've talked to Darren about that briefly. But with those, with those decisions made by council, as to, we could close out these plans and go final on the plans, and then get to the real work, which is creating the documents, the changes in the, in the PDO, and particularly the form-based codes that represent this vision, and I, and I'm anxious to get there, but I think
I know you are.
I think we need to give the public maybe one more bite at the apple as far as the, the issues go, and I would be happy to help articulate those dozen or so issues with yourself or council, or whomever you feel.
Well, I think
Because I think we're, we're close, very close, we can get there. And I think these plans are, you know, 80%, 90, 85% in good shape, to tell you the truth.
I appreciate that. I mean, and we can, the, the concerns that you're talking about, I want to talk about that. We, we should have some of that concerns, that's why I want to have those special meetings.
Yeah, I think that, I also think that the Planning and Zoning Board can help dramatically by articulating the pros and cons of each one of those dozen or so issues.
Yes, exactly.
And making recommendations to council as to whether they see, how they see council ought to come out on those. Because I think it's council that's got to make the decision.
They do.
Or so, dozen or so.
You're right. You're correct. You are, you're absolutely correct. I wish I would have started Pinehurst South, though.
Be helpful in that process. Okay, that's all I had to say.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I mean, I like everything that the, the plans have presented, and a lot of the ideas that have come together. I think the public input has been helpful, I think it's been beneficial for kind of generating a certain vision. I'm, I'm not necessarily convinced that more public hearing would, would change anything because I feel like it's the same, you know, same participants a, a lot of the time, so we're, we're hearing the same, same objectives, same, same desires. I think for, for the, the village portion specifically, because it's so close and so tied to, again, the, the character and charm and history of what makes Pinehurst what it is, what people think of when they think of Pinehurst, to me, development here should begin, or it would be beneficial to begin through the, I guess, public investment. A lot of the land that, that I feel that could start on, whether it be the, the public, public facilities, properties, where the water towers are, if there's a way to, you know, get that, get that relocated somewhere and sort of show an example of, of how the growth can look or should look, so people can kind of have a feel, you know. Pictures are one thing, and some people might, might find that scary, but if you can put something actually out there, you know, in place, the sidewalks that have been done from the community center to Pinehurst Elementary, I think those look great, I think they serve a wonderful purpose. But, you know, without, without seeing that, it's, how, how is it going to end up? Again, raising the funds to make it happen is the, the difficult part, and getting that type of decision approved is, is another story as well. But, you know, I hate to reference Field of Dreams, but you build it, they'll come. This, this could be the, the village of our dreams, but there has to be some, you know, something to get that going, and I, I don't think, I don't think it'll happen as quickly or, you know, in the manner that is desired if all of that burden is put on the developers. When we get to Pinehurst South, I think it's, it's a different situation there, but because of the specific location of this small area plan, I think the public investment is going to be key, at least on the early end.
You guys know that I'm a city planner, and I've been one for too long, but I have a lot of opinions, and I hope I don't voice them all, but I, I think what everybody's talking about is, this doesn't really have an implementation plan in it, it's just an overview, but the implementation plan comes with the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, not just budget, not one year, but the program that goes on for five to 10 years. And that's where we, we start seeing where we, in years and money where the sidewalks go, and that, the public investment. And the, and the form-based code, which is going to be a process, a long process, I've been through it, and it is going to be a long process, but, you know, that's the design, I guess, and the, and the CIP is the implementation. And so I think that's what we need to look at, that everybody was kind of saying, but not saying. And that's, you know, that's contingent on the city council, I mean, the town council. They're the ones that pass the CIP and, you know, give you the money to do the implementation, so those are the ones that have to be convinced.
I agree with everybody. I, I think when I see these plans, that, you know, it's good to give a path for development, and it's going to grow, and some of it has grown, and for better or for worse, we are where we are in, in some areas, and without a plan, we're not going to get what we've got in the parts of Pinehurst that we love, so we need to have a plan that helps us to get there, and, and saying this the best way, but a plan that is focused on the way things look rather than function fits. So, and I think that's, obviously, traffic is a concern, that's pretty practical, but looks is, you know, when we, when we get down to developing those codes and what they look like and what we recommend to council, you know, those will be important, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion about that, but, you know, I'm, I think it's an exciting time to be on the Planning and Zoning Board.
Kind of for me, you know, I like to focus on, kind of, my, my comments earlier, is I like to focus on a shorter horizon instead of the 50-year horizon. I think that's important for us, because just, as long as I've lived in Pinehurst, I've, I've always came to the village core area. I've always heard that we've had some plans, it's been difficult to implement. I mean, we've had 2008, we had COVID, we have all the things, and for some reason, it just doesn't seem to get kick-started. And, and I always use the term stagnant, and it's just kind of, I'm not so sure if that's exactly what it is or not, but this is an opportunity for us to maybe write a plan, because in my mind, we already have a plan, right? I mean, we have the zoning and the PDO and, and that type of thing, regardless of, of, you're creating, we either have the plan we got today, or we're going to redirect the plan. And that's, to me, the process, not whether or not we want to implement this plan. And, and that's why I like to look at a shorter horizon. I mean, the only thing that I could probably, you know, talk about specifically here is, you know, really, I think the connector streets, I think, is important to implement because that's going to have an effect on our daily lifestyle of our village. You know, I'd like to see the connector streets actually have a lot more curvature to them that may be implemented, to follow Olmstead's streets from actually a little bit more centered in the core. You know, but for me, I'm just really trying to figure out how us, how we as a board can help the process into, and to become something that is, is truly actionable. Is that fair to say? And, and I'm not there, so I'm trying to figure it out. So that's why I wanted to make sure we had a little bit of a roundtable. Darren, thanks for letting me do that, and I would like to do it on Highway 5 again, so anything you guys have that you want to say, that's even in your, in your thoughts, go ahead and get it out. And this whole idea of this meeting was that we go ahead and have this pre-meeting in a sense that we can get our thoughts, everything on the table for whenever we meet again, and we have something a little bit more detailed that we need to, need to accomplish, that we don't have that predetermined feeling, so, yes, sir, go ahead.
Just the immediately actionable items that we have to start moving this forward is changing the zoning. That's what we have. Adopting new zoning and changing the zoning. That's what you're going to sink your teeth into in the very near future here, once we get through this.
Yeah.
All right. Pinehurst South, sure you want, I just walk away from this one right now? You guys want to take a break? Everybody need to take a break?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, the PDO updates are
So here's a picture, Jeremy, here's a picture.
Yes, sir, the picture.
I know it's scary, but
Well, no, I, I use that term personally, but I, but I, but it also, I think it really resonates.
He opened up to you, Darren, you can't use that again.
He said it, that's all I
I'm kidding. All right, let's, let's start with, let's start with the existing zoning. So we look at the zoning in, in the area. Now, this is why, when we say there's a threat, there's a threat, there's a concern, and there's pressure. Look at all, if you look at the sheer amount of vacant land that we have down here, that is why we, that's why we elevated the small area plan for this area, because you've got the Mahaly Track, which is about 27 acres, that's currently on the market. We have the area to the south, I forget who owns this one, this is zoned OP. So both of those areas, we have gotten interested, and they're all vacant right now. And we don't, what we don't want to happen is what's happening, you know, with the Pinehurst South cottages, where they will jump in there under the existing zoning, so that's why we felt the, the need to elevate, elevate this area for the small area plan. Then you jump across the street on the west side, and you can see all this brown area, this is all zoned multiple family. This is all currently zoned multiple family, and what, and we've, again, got, we've got development requests in this area, or we've had some interest. So that is why we thought, we got to get, we got to, you know, get a plan in place, get some codes updated to get the, to drive the, the development that we want in that area. All right, so we'll go on to the comp plan. So the comp plan, this is much shorter than, than the Village Place area, and really, what the, the major driver in, in the comp plan in Village Place was this concept for an innovation hub, which we questioned it at the time, Jack, I remember that. We questioned, you know, what is an innovation hub? Well, let's put it in there because it sounds cool. Well, it does sound cool until you do the research on it, and the market analysis didn't really follow through in saying, you don't have the characteristics in this location for, for an, a true innovation hub. What we could do is we could do it in Gulf Cluster. A Gulf Cluster could go down there. So you've got Gulf Pride over here on Murdochsville Road, you could bring, you could have a cluster of golfing-related industries down in this particular area. So we go down to here, so you see, this is development status, the white means it's vacant. So that's a, that's a threat and a challenge. You look at the use allocation, and this is, in, in both the plans, both, both of the smaller plans, we really kind of skinnyed up the, the square footages that were in here in this document, so you'll see a lot less square footage than they, than they estimated in this one. So you look at, you look at Pinehurst, Pinehurst South, general office, 351,000 square feet of, of office. Medical office, on top of that, 266,000, and then general retail, 209,000. So you've got almost 800,000 square feet of, a little greater than 1,000 square feet of, of non-residential down there. You also, we also did show, there's, we, the consultant missed something on here, because we have stacked multiple family of 181 units, so what they weren't considering when they're looking at the plan, so here's the, here's the recommended land use plan. So this is all where stacked residential would go, which is in salmon color, purple color over here. Across the street, this is all zoned residential multiple family, so there should, apartment units should have been added into the mix, they just weren't. So it's really looking at, we think it's really looking at the east side. So that is the recommendation. This is where that innovation hub would be, suburban neighborhood over here to the west, and then suburban center over here. And now, we'll go into, we'll move through this because we covered a lot of it. Again, you want to look at the, you want to take a look at the planning goals and project goals? I wouldn't spend time with the entire document, of course. Existing conditions, again, this was covered by the, this was covered in the market analysis. Existing conditions, zoning, you've got your, your site plans, figure ground map, so you can, again, you can see the development pattern that's down there, and you can see a lot of vacant space. Vacant is developable. Historic district, the historic district really only ends here, brings into the harness track, nothing else really is brought into play. Street network, this shows the existing street network, and you can see it's not, a lot of places aren't, well, I guess it's connected, but you see a lot of dead ends that we could better, and I think the consultant worked on it, where we better connected some of, some of the places. So you can see all the dead ends. That was, pardon me?
It really makes clear the pressure on Highway 5.
Alex and I, there is, there's, because of, currently being marketed right now, is that 28, that 28, the 28 acres is currently being marketed. There's lands on the other side that's currently being marketed. So, yes, that's why, that's why we, we felt the need to, one, adopt the moratorium, so we, so we could clamp it down just for a little bit while we prepared these plans and get the form-based codes. So that, this is, we probably, there's more pressure here than there is actually in Village Place right now.
And Julia, just to clarify, though, I, I think because of what page you're, you're going through here, Darren, you, you were showing that all roads lead to Highway 5. Was that kind of what you're saying? Everything is funneled to that area?
That's what I'm saying. You know, there are a lot of places in Pinehurst where if I hit a traffic snag with a train, I can get creative and sort of work my way going another way, like I'm now cruising down St. Andrews, and I can't do that here. You're on 5, you're on 5. You know, there is no getting where you're getting without going down Highway 5.
And, you know, that's our development pattern. You've got CCNC, which, you know, there should have been, you know, without CCNC there, normal traffic planning, you would have a, a connector road or an arterial to help distribute that, while the golf courses and, and the gated communities really dry, really limit and narrow the options where you can get across town. So you're using Morganton, you're using 211, and then what, Midland, Cherokee, so you're using those. Or you have to go all the way down 1, down to Edwardian and around, so there's just not a lot of good options. But, that being said, the plan that we lay out does create some, some good connected areas here, so this is, again, this is showing this traffic situation. This is showing the land use, the, the darker color here, the charcoal, that shows the, that shows the vacant undeveloped pieces, and there should have been a couple more in there. Zoning, again, talking about the table of uses. Interesting enough, in, in OP, you can get mixed uses. Topography, there is some topography, you can see, you can see the west, it really, you know, it really goes downhill fast. This is the open space and trail network in, in Pinehurst South, so you can see the two sidewalks that are down there. We don't, I can't even figure out why this one is along here along Trotter, I think there's a church right here, but there's a sidewalk here, and there's a sidewalk up here by Quality Care. And you don't see, and this is something that we heard several times, that there's not enough green space in Pinehurst South. We made adjustments to the plan based on the, based on some of the comments that we heard. But we have a plan to change this. Demand analysis, again, same thing. Strengths, land availability, direct access to NC5, new development in, in the area is occurring, strong businesses such as Quail Haven. Quail Haven, that population gives an opportunity for more retail, coffee shops, things like that in that area. Weaknesses, no common theme to the buildings, I think that's been mentioned. Unrelated land uses, that's been mentioned. Traffic issues, has that been mentioned? Have we talked about that? Opportunities, capitalizing growth along NC5, you can. There's a lot of traffic. Concentration on public and semi-public services, post office, fire station, VA. Create a distinct identity for the area, that's what we're trying to do a little bit with the, with the form-based code, and that's where, you know, a cluster, we could create a cluster, a Gulf Cluster in this area. There's enough land down there, and it has good access. Build off the USGA, infill development. Threats, railroad crossings, yes, the railroad, you have to contend with it, that, that may affect, you know, some retailers wanting to be on the east side of, on the east side of NC5. So a significant amount of vacant land south of the study area along NC5 that could take demand potential away. NC-5 that could take demand potential away.
I apologize if I've missed it, but has there been any sort of study into the impact that increasing the pedestrian and bike thoroughfares, either from the neighborhoods across Highway 5, so around the lake, into the Monticello neighborhood, and even extending it from, say, where the cradle is, going, following the railway basically up of that route? Any study into what, you know, implementing sidewalks or multi-use pathways there would reduce trips?
No, we haven't looked at that.
I think there is a part of this plan that discusses a multi-use walkway.
No, that's one thing I do remember is a multi-use walkway alongside the railway that would at least connect the village a little bit more.
I agree, but I just have a question because I don't, I don't know. Has Pinehurst considered golf cart ways in their right-of-way off of the roads rather than traveling on roads? I can get from my house on the cask all the way to the post office if I get creative. I have to go through the harness track and around down then over Monticello and all the way down there. Anyway, there doesn't seem to be any path that's off of the roadway and not even thought about. And why not? I mean, it doesn't have to, you can separate it from walking, but if it's made a little bit larger than what the walkways are now, you can make that work. So I just don't understand why it's always like on the roads.
I think that's a...
Make it easier, especially, you know, if we're going to have oil at such a high, you know, amount, and everybody's trying to use electric cars or, you know, not use oil. But I just find it, I guess it's maybe a rule that's always been in Pinehurst. I don't know. But I sure would like to see them.
Increasing golf cart mobility is a comp plan goal, and we are trying to figure out ways to do that. We fortunately have another plan that we're going to be looking at here in the future.
It's just that there's such huge right-of-ways, you know, it's a 15-foot right-of-way even in historic areas, but, you know, you have that room to be able to at least try that.
A lot of it's...
It's only walking paths that are off the road. And it could be a separate asphalt or whatever you want to call it. Right-of-way, I mean, road for golf carts, just...
See a little bit more opportunity to implement that in the Pinehurst South area as well, given where we're at. Because I do think there's going to need to be some creativity towards, you know, golf carts and pedestrian traffic into Highway, or into Pinehurst South as well.
Actually help with the traffic on 5.
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
Especially, you know, people coming out of the developments on the west side, you know, to be, it just seems like a...
It's something, well, all the streets down in Pinehurst South, you'll be able to drive a golf cart on because they're not going to be over 35 miles an hour. You'll be fine there. And even if it's over 35 miles an hour, you have a cart that's registered that has the safety equipment on it. You can go on any road, I think. Agreed.
Another one in my opinion.
All I get around town is a golf cart. All right, recommendations. So this is, again, the meat of the order, and this is where we're going to have, this is where, rightfully so, not rightfully so, where we've made an adjustment to the comp plan, and people have questioned it. We've made an adjustment to the comp plan goal, especially it's east of NC-5. So we're going to talk about that, and there'll probably be an ongoing discussion. So, let's get into the overview, blah, blah, blah. Read all that, images. All right. So here's the, I don't want to get caught on that one again. So let's just go right to the design plan. Low intensity, this is a low-intensity option. And when you see the preferred design plan, you're going to see some major changes here based on some of the input. So you can see, this is the low-intensity plan. You can see, in the low-intensity plan, you see different building styles, residential building styles on the west side of NC-5. You see some commercial buildings along here. Then, as you go over to the east side, we're showing, on the southern end of the area, residential. And that remains in the plan at this point. I understand the discussion that we're having out there, we'll continue to have, but this just shows that residential in the area. Transitioning up to commercial mixed-use office, probably just, probably, I would probably say it's some type of office type. This is where we're thinking a cluster could be. That's why we're showing these, showing these larger buildings on there, so you could do a, maybe a Gulf Pride-type development down here. Then you go over to the core area, which we have a rendering of, kind of shows where this could be like the happening little core area, and we have some figures to show that later. Here, the high-intensity plan, the high-intensity plan just adds some, it adds, really, I think it really ends up adding, let's see here, more residential units, more multiple family units. Yeah, where the old one, we have 52 multiple family units west of NC-5. This one has 172 west of NC-5. Then it has, this is showing some attached single-family housing on the south, and some detached single-family housing on the south. That is where we're going to have the, that's where we're going to bog down a little bit, and we're going to have, we'll have some discussions on it. It's fine. The plans themselves, we show a relocation of Monticello to the south to make the, potentially, doesn't have to happen, potentially make the harness track larger. So if we did choose to move the public services complex out there, we'd have more options. That also opens up the ability to potentially have some more commercial infill buildings along that area. Here's the image of, here's that rendering, and you can see kind of what the area, looking to the north. You can see that we, actually, in this rendering, we took the housing out of the center to create that five-acre park, the five to six-acre park in here. So you can see the proposed central green. See kind of the development pattern, residential going up to non-residential in this area, shared-use path, residential infill, here's the proposed core area.
Okay, there we go. Can you point out on the map above where that proposed central green is?
Right here, oh, I'm sorry, right here?
On the map above.
Oh, it's not there.
I know.
Not there.
Where would it be?
You'll see it. It's coming up.
Oh, good.
It's coming up. You'll see it. These were the original plans. So it's coming up. All right. So here's an image of that core area. The core area shows, there's like a garage building. We're showing it as a market incubator potential space, a retail coffee shop, potentially a restaurant. That's where the home builder's site is, where the restaurant is shown in the proposed office. This image, we sat down, we talked with the owner of the lands in this area, and she was actually excited about this. I sent, she wants, she's been wanting to put a coffee shop down there. She loves this image. She likes the idea of the market incubator space. So, you know, we do sit down and talk with some of these property owners, and this image, some people say it's contrived. Sometimes the future is a little bit contrived. We have to lay out an aspiration. But this is the stuff that gets potential landowners interested. It really is. It might not end up looking like this exactly, but it gets, their creative juices flowing, and they talk to people about it.
But to Louise's comment before, is that, I mean, there has to be a capital improvement plan to acquire this property if you're going to have large open space and/or improve our net in Olivia Lane. I mean, the village has to step up to the plate financially.
There's two ways you can do it.
Really?
Yeah, you're right. There's two ways. You either buy it, you're right, you buy it, or you provide an incentive for the developer to provide you with that land. And generally, you know what that incentive generally is? If it's residential, it's more units. If it's commercial, it's maybe more commercial space. So, yeah, we have to figure, you have to figure that balance out. If we want that park to develop, if we really do, we have to figure that, we have to figure that, we have, it has to go in CIP, or we have to figure out how to incentivize that occurring.
Realignment of Monticello changed the Lake Hills intersection, or does it still?
Nope.
It was kind of off the map, so?
It does, yeah. It does not change. Nope. So here's the detail plan showing, and you can see it here.
I just wanted to ask one question. In all your public meetings, is there a sense of neighborhood anywhere through here? Is there really a sense of neighborhood where they would, you know, come to a park like this or a festival here? Or would everybody come from, I don't know, the village, for instance?
Well, I was trying to build on the connectivity. It doesn't exist right now, so...
I think part of the problem is the existing neighborhoods that are there have no connectivity. And so we have, particularly in the Jackson-Hamlet area, and then also, I forget the names of the little townhomes that are back off the road there. There are a lot of folks there who don't have accessibility by walking or bike to anything that they would want to get to. And so there are these little isolated enclaves. And I do think that there is a bit of the, if you build it, they will come, but they also have to be able to get there.
Even if you go into Monticello, if you go up there, you know, there's nothing for people to, they can walk on the road, but, I mean, even though that speed's been reduced to 25, that's still used as a cut-through. So, yeah, there's nothing, and same from the Lake community, nothing coming up that way, so.
Right to your point. If you lived four blocks away, you would not be able to walk to this area. You would still have to get into your car and drive there. Is that kind of the point?
You technically could, but, yeah, people are more likely to, it's a barrier to access.
Particularly, if you're crossing 5. There aren't good places to cross on 5. People speed. If I've got, if I've got little kids who want to get to a park that's on the other side of 5, there is no way, no way.
Drive to the Southern Pines Park.
You know, so it's the type of thing where if we want that to become a reality, it's important to provide the connectivity for folks.
Darren, isn't DOT proposing curb gutter and sidewalks?
Yeah, I think we've seen the sidewalk. I'm not sure about, Alex, did you see those recent plans? I know there's sidewalks planned.
Yeah, I thought there were. How far up 5 do they go? Do they stop there at the gas station?
I think they stop at Trotter. No, we are also looking, there's a separate plan that we're looking at north of Trotter to 211, because that's going to get done ahead of the major project. And I thought, last set of plans I saw showed a walking path and wider walking path.
You're talking about the improvement from Aberdeen all the way into, down to this area?
Trotter Hills.
I think they stop at the stoplight.
They do stop at that stoplight. But the village, as I understand it, has agreed with DOT that a sidewalk will be put on the west side, the west side of Route 5, when that construction happens. Now, that is a little help to this area, but it's something.
One public comment that I've seen out there is concerned that if we are going to move the sort of vehicle city services from the Rattlesnake Trail area and bring them out down here to a realigned Monticello, that it risks making that green area, as you head up Monticello and you have the kind of forest buffer between there and the harness track, making that feel very commercial. And folks saying, wouldn't that be a great area for walking paths? Don't we want to leave it forested? Why do we want to put? So I think if we did do that, it would be important to think about screening and keeping the, you know, a forested feel along there. And think about, do we need some walking paths to get from the harness track to this area that we're talking about, you know, developing?
Yes, and we've talked about that, and you'll see in some of the plans, that, remember, it says potential VOP service there.
Right, right, right.
It's not, nothing's been designed yet.
Yep.
Nothing's, a decision hasn't been made. All this shows what currently exists as a potential. That's it. You're getting into, if we go in that direction, yeah, we need to, those things need to get hammered out. There's no doubt.
There is one thing that, in this area, that actually I haven't heard a lot discussed, and that is, this, of course, abuts a very large parcel in Aberdeen, just south of Olivia.
Yeah.
And in fact, that proposal, although it's been tabled, at least for now, there is a planned unit development approval for that parcel, which, if it happens, not only are the railroad crossings an issue, but the potential traffic through this area onto Monticello would be a significant concern.
You just have to slow, you have to figure out if you want to slow it down. How do you funnel them out? How do you stop them?
Well, I'm talking about in-the-street design. You have to be recognizing that there's a significant development potential, just abutting it.
Correct. It almost has to be, well, it has to be designed like a collective street. It has to be wide enough. But I get it, yeah.
Something to think about also, as well as that planned unit development, it's a mixed use, is that right? That's currently approved for the area?
Yeah, but as far as my, everything, that old development is not moving forward.
It's not what moving?
That one's not moving forward.
Well, I guess my question should be, what's there now? What could happen in that area?
I think it's a mixed use. I think, I don't know what the zoning is. I think it's mixed use, isn't it?
So their previous, so Aberdeen's previous approval now still stands, though, for that mixed use?
I thought they had to go back to council to...
Okay, no, I don't know. I just know as we talk about this...
They do, but something has to go, when I talked to Justin, he said something would have had to go back to the council for approval on something.
Site plans and so forth.
Something like that. But again, that development, that development and that developer's out of that. So that doesn't mean that that plant, that's not active right now with other people, and that could be.
Well, that's where I was going, is I want to make sure that we consider what could happen there as a reality at some point in the future.
I mean, what could happen there is commercial mixed-use development. So, yeah, I think they showed 100,000 square foot grocery on there, didn't they? Something like that.
Okay.
I mean, we have to be, Jack points it out, you know, what do you do with the road if it connects in there? How do you figure out, how do you figure out not to get them moving forward? The only way not to do it is to not connect. And maybe we don't connect. All right. Images. Ah, Julia, here we go. There you see. Now, you see the proposed open space and pedestrian network. Now, look at this. See, we're connecting this area. Now, unfortunately for David, we're not connecting to the east yet, but that should be, we should start planning that out. We've got to plan it out. But you can see that it is a well-connected area. You can see the park that we put in there, the park. You can see the shared-use path. You can see the, you know, we'd like to put sidewalks on the west side to connect, better connect those neighborhoods. We still haven't figured out how to get a pedestrian connection back to the lake area, but we continue to look at that. So, and you can see, oh, see our little walking path around the harness track? Do you see that little thing that we put in there? So, yes, we recognize that. So, yeah, that just shows that, I think it shows a pretty well-connected green space. Look at the park going across the street. We've got to figure out, you know, how can we get across 5? But you can see the green space. We have a connected set of green spaces in here. If we can get that Central Park area done, get that moving, you can see how it connects to other places in there. I do think, I like the inclusion, if it can happen, I like the inclusion of the park into that area. I just, I think it, I think it...
I think that's, I think that's great, but for me, in my mind, now I've got a pathway to take my golf cart into this area, which is around the harness track, when it's open to do so, you know? And so that's just a point to point out.
The shared-use path that showed here number four, is that pedestrian and bicycle?
Right now it is. That doesn't mean it can't, I mean, it's just a concept. So we haven't even looked at that, you know, what you're talking about for golf, because we don't allow golf carts on our greenway trails at this point. So, but, the shared-use path, I think, we've got to, this is a, the shared-use path could be a great bonus to this community and the region if we can make it work. Because, you know, getting down to Aberdeen or going up, and to have, what's been refreshing is the railroad has been open to this concept. And they've been, and we've talked about it. So it's in there because they're open to the concept. And if you've dealt with railroads, like I've dealt with railroads in the past, it's not, they're not generally very easy to work with. It's been refreshing working with our railroad folks.
On a scale of 1 to 10, how difficult is it going to be to implement that pathway?
We got to, well, I mean, there's a lot of design issues. I mean, we, in order, we have to do the survey work to figure out, you know, what, we'd have to move the step too, because we don't know how much stuff would have to be moved. The train, the railroad wants a certain distance from them. They want a fence, things like that. So it's, 1 to 10, you're probably 7.
That's hopeful, then, from what?
Yeah. And there's usually...
That's what I was afraid of. I thought he was going to say we were just drawing it from the bottom.
And there's usually, I will tell you, there's usually monies out in the federal budget to enhance your pedestrian way.
Does the village own, or does Pinehurst own the property on the railroad side from Morganton to Monticello?
Nope. No, that's, I think, most of that right of way is the railroad's right of way.
It's, it's the right of way, but next to the right of way, is that, is that resort? Both?
Both? Oh, oh, you mean from north, Monticello North?
From, from wherever Monticello meets Highway 5, all the way to Morganton.
Oh, I think, I think it's mostly railroad, yeah, but there's some Pinehurst and some resort in there, some of us.
Because the path, the mixed use path, would that be within the railroad right of way? Or would that be into whatever, whatever?
We're showing it, I mean, the idea would be, it would be somewhere in the railroad right of way, because you want to run along the railroad. That's the easiest way to get through town. All right. Image again, so this is showing some precedent images of how, here's, here's the image that we were looking at. So look at number four. So when we're talking about the shared, what a shared use path could potentially look like, this was an image that we, I don't know where we took it from. So that, that's kind of the concept on that shared use path.
Yeah, I've seen those in Charlotte and actually walked on it in an area like residential, but walk, use it to walk down to a restaurant and...
A brewery, there's a brewery right there.
It's very similar to the connector that goes from Alexandria into Washington DC. And I'll tell you, that is just on weekends, it is almost impossible to roller skate along there because everybody is on it, you know? On part, it's beautiful, you know, it goes along the Potomac, it's gorgeous. But having this kind of connectivity, you know, people are out there pushing their kids in strollers or people on bikes, you just, you know, everybody wants to be on it when it's a nice day.
It is, and it's, it's, it's a good concept now. Can you imagine being able to connect that whole corridor all the way down to Aberdeen, all the way up to 211? I think that, I think that would be a boon. And then all the feeder corridors to it, getting out Linden, so I, I think it's a good concept, we're going to make it work. But, yeah, it's difficult. So here is a concept of that, when we, when we created that open space park plan. So this was kind of the concept that we used. You can see the development around it, single-family attached housing. And then north, you'll see the, you'll see the, those are office, office-style buildings. But we really, I really like this park concept. I think this really would, I think it would sit well in that area. So you can see some of the images of what, what things could be in park. We talk about this little exercise, a lot of these parks now have these little exercise areas within them. So you have just people out there doing fitness stuff. Nice water feature, so I think it could be cool. Traffic and transportation, yes, trips will be added. Regardless of what we do, the same thing applies here as it does anywhere else. Trips, commercial uses, residential, everything adds a trip. Some add more trips. This just has to reckon, we recognize that right now, any trips that are going to be added to, to NC-5, it's going to continue to congest until we can make some other improvements. But it's at, it's at level of service F at various times of the day. We know it. You know, if you're, if you're going up and down NC-5 at what, noon, 11 to 1, it can back up from what, Morganton all the way down to Lake Hills. So this just shows, this shows some of the, some of the trap, some of the level of service at the, at the intersections. A is good, all the way down to F being bad. So you can see that there's, there's not a lot of good in some of these areas, but, you know, at other times of the day, you're at level of C to B service. Shared use path, trip generation, again, this is just, again, at estimates based on the land uses that are in the area. It's the best we can do. Proposed circulation plan, again, a well-connected area of streets. This is how the, the shared use path could potentially look at Blake and Trotter. Again, then getting down to the design of the streets.
Is that right, the 60-foot right of way? It's on that image, but that's accurate?
Correct. For commercials, you need six, you need at least 60 feet for a commercial street.
It's, I'm surprised it's not more on 5.
But this is outside of 5, it's not on 5.
Oh, okay, so that detail does not...
Yeah, that, we don't, we're not doing a detail on, on 5 itself, because that's, it's all state. No, I got you. Now we have the build-out scenario plan low, so you can see what this scenario is. The low has more single-family detached on the southern end of the, of the area. We've added some commercial here just south of Blake Boulevard. So the only thing that really changes between the two plans are the, are the housing, the form of the housing in the southern part of Pinehurst South, and the, whether it be a single-family attached or detached on the west side of NC-5 in that RMF area. So here would be the, the, the build-out scenario high, so you can see the single-family attached around, around the green space, the Village Green South, whatever we call it. And then you can see some apartments on the west side, you can see some more single-family, you know, potentially detached and attached over there. Phasing plan, again, you can see, it just, there's a lot of area, there's a lot of square footage, it's going to take a lot of years to develop. We say it's a 50-year plan, we just, that's an absorption plan. And that's really, it's really where, where we can end, I guess.
What else, Darren, anything from there?
I'm wearing out, so.
Yeah, I know you're wore out, I know I did.
I went to Eagles concert last night, I'm really tired.
Hey, so let's just real quickly do the same thing, kind of just go around the room, because I really want to hear, and I think it's important for staff to hear, what's in your initial thoughts, Philip?
I don't know that I have an intelligent opinion at this time. There's a lot to digest in this area, there's just so much going on currently and proposed. I can express my opinion, but I don't know that it would get us anywhere.
Don't worry, you've got two weeks for that.
Yep.
I don't know that my opinion will get us anywhere either. But, you know, I know that the words "high density" give a lot of people the heebie-jeebies. And I know that Highway 5 is a really troubled artery with a lot of pressure on it. I also know that Pinehurst suffers from a lack of diversity of housing stock. And our multifamily housing, with the exception of the Greens, which is much vilified, is very, very old. And doesn't really, you know, it's more, it's better suited to golf weakened warriors here for, you know, short-term rentals than it is to somebody who actually needs a multifamily housing situation. Whether that's somebody who is older and trying to age in place here in Pinehurst, or whether it's students who are trying to stay in the area, if it's young families or single parents who want to be in Pinehurst for our schools and can't afford a single-family detached home or manage the upkeep. You know, I think it's important that if we are going to be a vibrant, diverse community, that we have a place for diverse people to live. And I heard a lot that no one wanted it in the Village Center and that the Greens was going to ruin the Village Center and ruin the character of Pinehurst. Okay, well, we're all kind of in agreement that this section of Pinehurst lacks character right now. And we want to create character there. It's hard to ruin the character of a place that lacks character. So we have a unique opportunity to create a character and create a place for what I think is a needed asset. So I, I do, you know, part of me looks at this high-density plan and sees it as an opportunity to thoughtfully create a place that is in the character of Pinehurst and meets a need. Where I get heartburn is that 5 is such a mess. And this, this plan only works when we figure out a way to solve that problem. However, I, I sure hope we can find a way to solve that problem, because I think it's important, if, if Pinehurst is going to be a vibrant place that grows, that we manage that growth, we put it in a place where we can manage it, and we do it in a way that is attractive and charming, and we have an opportunity here to do that. So those are my thoughts.
I, I take it back, I do have a thought. You mentioned, you mentioned the golf cluster, which is kind of near and dear to my, my day job. There's going to be a need for a place for those folks to go. Should that come to fruition and we start getting more attention here with some of these golf cluster, golf supply chain-type companies, they're going to have to go somewhere and they're likely going to want a Pinehurst address. We're going to need a place to put them. And I say "put them," I don't, I don't mean it, you know, to the side, but they're going to need a place to habitate, and this may be the answer to that.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, and I agree with that from a different perspective. I think that the concern has been, the plan has shown a market analysis, which says it'd be easy to throw in some housing in this area. And particularly the area I'm talking about is the east side of Route 5, not necessarily Section D or on the left side. And the reason being is that we do need a place in Pinehurst, at least the feeling has been, that we do need a place to have small-scale professional, potentially local retail and/or businesses locate within the village. And this is one of the few places that it makes a lot of sense to have businesses locate. And to have them, have the area used up with housing, which is, yes, in high demand, but could be allocated maybe to another section within Pinehurst South, makes more sense to people. And in fact, the comprehensive plan was very specific about this area is a business professional opportunity, and we should capitalize on the opportunity. So that's, that's been a, a big concern, I think, within the community. I think the, the area has great potential for different types of uses. I think it does have the potential for multifamily within a certain areas. It has great potential for small businesses and/or local retail establishments. Traffic is a concern, but it's always going to be a concern, and there's no getting around it. I think it's almost an emotional subject with too many people. As you said, Darren, no matter what happens, there'll be more traffic. So let's, let's kind of get on with that. I am concerned that we design it, that it is designed properly so as not to exacerbate the traffic issue on local streets. So that would be, that would be a challenge, I think, a little bit. So overall, I think it has great promise. And again, once I think is there's a, a half a dozen decisions that can be made relative to this area, and we can move right ahead.
I think I'm just most excited about the opportunity for this area to become something. You know, my, my entire life, I'm 32, I think I've lived here since I was six, there hasn't really been anything. The, the post office has been the most reliable thing in that section. So I think creating a plan where you can kind of create some, some harmony there, where there's an expectation of, you know, what can be expected, what is going to draw people there, I think that would be helpful. You even look across the street in, in Trotter Hills, you know, seeing the growth that's occurred there in the last few years has been wonderful. But even in there, you know, you look at Pinehurst Coins and it's, you know, to some, it's a, it's a beautiful building, it, it serves a purpose. But then you go to the other buildings there, they're each, there's, there's nothing tying them together except they're all commercial spaces. The, the only thing there is the use. Again, I think the Form-based code will help a lot of that harmony come together. And even with, you know, if, if some of this is multifamily residential, I, I think there is a need for that. Allocating some of the commercial space for new businesses to kind of set up the hub here, giving them a place to go, I think is important. But pairing with that, a, a lot of the quality, quality of life shared there is, you know, having somewhere to, to walk, to, to go to lunch, to take a break, go sit in the park and just take a breather. You know, I, my, my office was located in downtown Southern Pines for a little over a year. And my favorite part of that location was, you know, if, if you get, if you get off a call and you're just fed up with it, you go take a walk. You can go grab a sandwich around the corner, but you can make use of that, that area. A lot of the commercial spaces that we have now don't have that. You get there, you work, and if you want to do anything, if you want to go grab a bite to eat, take a walk, you have to drive somewhere to, you know, get to a place where that's reasonable. So I think utilizing this space overall just really increases the quality of, you know, of, of that land.
I, I agree with everything that was said. The character and the attracting the businesses, gosh, and the walkability. The only thing you can do here is walk around the parking lot, you know, it's, it's about it. So I think it has a lot of potential. If we get away from the mindset, I call it, that the development is highway commercial, you know, that's not what it is. And it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be like that. We don't have to zone to get a target in there or whatever it is. And that's the kind of businesses I think people think about along 5 down that south, you know, south of...
Five, five's going to be the, that's why I didn't talk about it. Five's going to be the elephant in the room, no matter what. The other part of that is development's going to happen, you know, we're, we're not in a vacuum. So we can't control what's going to happen outside, but we can control what we can do. And I think that's, that's what we can focus on. You know, I think there are greater powers that be that can influence what can happen with Highway 5. If it's actually an issue, then that'll be addressed at some point. But as far as, you know, taking advantage of what we can control, I think focusing on this development is...
But this is, this is the poor stepsister, this part of 5, you know? The north of this on 5, this type of development just wouldn't be tolerated. You couldn't do it, couldn't do any of that. So I don't know why we have to push it, push it down on all those folks that live around there. You could add on 15501.
Only thing I'll add is, yeah, I mean, DOT, they, they own 5, so they have to be a partner, they have to be a partner in this. And, and it's, it's, in a way, it's their, it's partially their problem to fix. So I, I think we, we do the best we can with our space and lean on them to, to help fit with us, because we're partners with them, we have to be. That's all.
Thank you. Darren, could you give us a little bit of an update on the moratorium situation as a board there?
Moratorium's in place until June 8th or 6th. So we, we, we keep, I think the last one was 120 days, we keep extending it out. I've been trying to keep them short, because I don't like to keep them, it's not that I don't love going to council and public hearing and asking to extend the moratorium, and the easiest thing would be do it for a year. But I, to show that we're, that we're moving forward with, under the statute, you're supposed to show that you're moving forward with, with rectifying the reasons why you created the moratorium. So I want to keep, we keep moving forward with getting the plan done, then we move to the Form-based code. We, we very well might have to extend that moratorium again, but I want to, I want to keep showing that we have public progress. And then I want to come out in a public setting, because give anybody else who has a chance to, maybe somebody has some concerns about the moratorium. Maybe some of those property owners have some concerns. So it gives them a, gives them a forum, at least to talk in a public setting. So it runs out the 8th. I need, we want to get moving as expeditiously as we can. That's why we want to have a follow-up meeting here in two weeks, if we can make it, and have more sessions.
Yeah, did you have anything to say? I was going to say that, you know, because I feel that the zoning changes in this area probably have a little bit more of a, a clock on them, considering some of the demand that we've even seen as a board than the other area. Philip, thank you. Sorry, no, you're fine, sorry, thank you very much. Nope, nope, sorry. So I think the, the clock on this area from the moratorium standpoint and the rezoning is probably a little, there's a little bit more pressure on that. You know, we've seen, you know, when we talked about the cottages as a board, the initial cottage proposal that included the, the commercial mul, you know, mixed-use area was a lot different. And now that the cottages are approved, we know that there's at least going to be some residential mix in this area. So we have to have some consideration, and to Jack's point, where, you know, but we know there's going to be some sort of cohesiveness, unless we make it all residential, which isn't going to happen, or I wouldn't think so. There needs to be some cohesiveness in how to create the professional environment as well as the residential around it. So that's why I like the park idea, I like the... So, that's why I like the park idea, I like the Form-Based Codes, I think that's going to help create some sort of cohesion, cohesiveness together. I think that there's a great, there's a great connectivity plan, at least for what can be implemented initially, and then maybe see where we're at again for for future, for future steps, but that's just my thoughts.
Right.
Anything else? I know we're all itching to kind of get out of here. Let's talk about what do you want to meet about in two weeks?
I think I'd like to meet in two weeks, so we can start, you're familiar with it. Jack was talking about some of the, some of the, talking about potential concerns, potential adjustments that we might want to recommend to be made moving forward, and one that we're just talking about. The Pinehurst, the residential in Pinehurst South, or some of the other things. So, I would like to start hammering through some of those. So, what, in the next two weeks, you know, Jack, Jack, Jack has a list of some things that he's discussed.
No, it's helpful.
And and somebody, some of you others might be hearing some some other concerns as well. Let's bring those to the table, let's talk about them. I want to talk about them as a group, so we can make a, so as we move forward, we can make a recommendation.
Should we, should we email those to you, I mean, and 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 copy the groups?
Sure.
This is the areas where I think we ought to discuss, the issues that maybe we ought to discuss, and maybe get pros and cons or something like that?
Sure, and I'll, and we'll forward them to the group. Does two weeks work for you all? You want to meet in two weeks or not?
We, what's everybody's thoughts?
Or three weeks.
Well, for me personally, I don't want to slow the process.
Oh, St. Patrick's Day, not St. Patrick's Day.
So, I would probably say, I don't want to be the one to slow down the process. I'd like the process to continue if the board wants to continue. I will have some changes in my life that may derail me in two weeks for that, for that second week from today, but I'd like it to continue.
We can do it three weeks, that's fine. I mean, I I want to meet quicker than, I I I don't want to wait till our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, no, I think a working session in a couple of weeks, if you can, if we can schedule it between us, it'd be great.
A working, and it doesn't have to be at 4 o'clock. I mean, we're gonna do, we can do it during the day, we can, we can do it.
Three weeks.
I know some of them are suremployed.
Okay. Louise can't be here on the 17th, I'm iffy.
All right, so we'll have to look at the schedule.
Those 17th may not work, but it does have to be on the Thursday, right?
17th.
What's available to us?
As long as it's not a council meeting day, I'm fine. As long as it's not an HPC meeting day, we're fine.
So, a bowl on Tuesdays.
Bowl on Tuesdays, okay. I mean, is it, do we want to look at, you know, the Fridays may not work? Do we want to consider, you know, I don't know what's going on the Monday, the 21st, or the, or Tuesday, the 22nd?
Uh, 22nd is, what, is that a council meeting?
Probably a council meeting.
Yeah, 8th and 22 will be the council meetings.
Don't want to push it out much farther than that.
No, I don't want to push it out, so what is, 20th, was that a Monday?
The 20th is a Sunday, the 21st is the Monday.
Want to do 21st, how's that work? Good, 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 good. All right, let's try that channel, let's send out a notice to see if they can.
Timing-wise in the, in the day, what's good for everyone?
We can start earlier, we can start later.
Don't want to do a 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and that way we're hopefully done by 5, and probably calling into it unless there's something you want to accomplish?
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, I want to start hammering through some of these, some of these sticking points.
Want to say 3 to 5? A little late? I think the.
And we might go over there, I mean, we have the ability to go, use the conference room over there, so we're sitting around a table.
Well, I think the idea too of a work session, in my mind, gives the opportunity to be a little late, participate, who can as a board, even if we participate with five members, you know, I think it's beneficial for the village and the process. So, even if we all can't make it, let's, let's, let's set something's on to make everybody who make it can.
We're gonna have a big map, and we're gonna sit around some maps, and we're gonna start drawing on the maps, and that's what I want to do.
Monday.
What? What's going on on 21st?
Well, does it, does everybody want to consider the Friday, the 18th?
They see you, they've all been over there.
They're over here, because the council conference room is booked for budget. Are we just averse to Friday, the 18th? Which is a Friday, I mean, I know it's not the best thing to do, but 3 to 5 would be done?
3 to 5.
3 to 5. I'm, I'm saying fine, I'm putting it into it, if you haven't noticed.
I I will have somewhere to go at 5 o'clock, so I will make sure that I'm not chatty.
So, so Friday, March 18th, 3 to 5, is that doable for a few members of the board? I probably will be able to make that one.
Okay.
Good by me. Do we need notification, do you have enough time to, well, this is, 8 hours, good for P and Z, okay, good.
All right, let's do that, decision made, right?
Awesome.
Okay, what else do we need to discuss from the standpoint? All right, so just a general business, otherwise, other than just reminding everybody of the NC School of Government Trainings online, is there any, any general business anybody wants to discuss? No? Okay, all right, so just making everybody aware that the next meeting date is April 7th, 2022, so please keep your calendars open for that, but we're gonna have the work session on March 18th. Otherwise, does anybody want to give a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Jack, second by David, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.